Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And if we could have our clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning. Kemp?
Here.
Coaten? Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
We're churning on that equipment and everything this morning. We're ratcheting up here. Please be advised, this is from Commissioner Cohen, that I will be unable to attend the B O C C this morning as I'm out of the office due to back surgery. I apologize for any inconvenience my absence may cause. Please read this memo into the record. So, we have that on record. And with that, we'll have a pledge and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White. Commissioner White?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know some of you have joined us virtually, so if you're able to, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. I hope that you will sharpen our minds and help us to look for solutions to issues that are often complex, and just pray that you'll guide us in a direction that's in the best interest for just as many people as possible. As always, I ask for blessings for first responders, members of our armed forces, that you will keep them safe and guide them each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And, oops. We'll also ask, I wanted to also, keeping our thoughts and prayers, Commissioner Cohen, through his surgery today, or not today, but soon. And, thank you. And we'll present two recognitions today. The recipients are joining the meeting virtually. The first recognition will be presented by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I see that we do have Government Affairs Regional Manager Joel Brown with us today from Southwest Florida Water Management District. The Hillsborough County Public Utilities and its skilled staff do a phenomenal job providing clean drinking water and wastewater treatment service to Hillsborough County. Additionally, the department is instrumental in producing reclaimed water for distribution to residents and businesses in our community. This year, the county is partnering with the State of Florida and the Southwest Florida Water Management District, SWFMD, to increase awareness and public outreach on water conservation, which has been extremely helpful in our community's growth. I am pleased to present this proclamation for Water Conservation Month and Florida Water Reuse Week. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and freshwater is the most precious natural resource. And whereas, since 1999, Hillsborough County has joined the State of Florida, including the Southwest Florida Water Management District, in designating April as Water Conservation Month to teach residents ways they can help save Florida's water resources. And whereas, water reuse conserves Florida's limited water resources, and Water Reuse Florida has designated May 16 through May 22 as Florida Water Reuse Week. And whereas, in addition to encouraging Florida-friendly landscaping and its beneficial uses, Hillsborough County and the Southwest Florida Water Management District promote water conservation through a wide variety of educational efforts, community outreach, water use restrictions, agency partnerships, and funding and construction of reclaimed water systems. And whereas, such conservation efforts have resulted in an overall steady decrease in the average daily water use per person in Hillsborough County. And whereas, small steps can make a big difference. And water conservation is as easy as installing simple water-saving devices in the home and using Florida-friendly landscaping techniques. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 2021 as Water Conservation Month and May 16 through May 22 as Florida Water Reuse Week in Hillsborough County, and calls upon all residents to promote water-saving measures and take appropriate steps to conserve and protect this vital resource. Executed this third day of March 2021 and signed by all seven commissioners. Mr. Brown, thank you for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for having me join you today. My name is Joel Brown, and I am the Government and Community Affairs Manager for the Southwest Florida Water Management District. It is my honor and privilege to participate in Hillsborough County's recognition of April as Water Conservation Month, as across the nation, state, and district, water resources remain, supply, water resource supply protection remains a critical priority. I'm proud to say that partnership with the county and other municipalities regionally, over $135 million has been invested in conservation efforts, resulting in an estimated $262 million gallons of conservation per day since 1987. While the national and statewide averages are near 130 gallons per day per capita, the Tampa Bay area is well below 100 gallons per day per capita. Your adoption of proclamation today galvanizes the historical commitment to furthering the partnership and reducing the demand needs of our current and future residents, businesses, and visitors. On behalf of our governing board, staff, and your constituents, I extend a profound appreciation and gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And our next recognition will be presented by Commissioner Hagan.
Yes. I just didn't see that there was any other hands up to say anything. But thank you so much, and I guess we're getting prepared for Conservation Month as it is April in Florida, Water Reuse Month in May. And Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, just a few weeks ago, I brought to your attention the gallant actions of a solid waste hauler that stepped forward to help a toddler in need. Today, I get to share in all two real-life and death story of another man's heroic actions that are worthy of our recognition and appreciation. I'd like to welcome driver-operator Waldo Fidel and District Manager Matt R. Corolla from Waste Connections of Tampa, who are here with us. Mr. Fidel is the father of three children and a valued employee of Waste Connections for over 11 years. On Tuesday, February 9th, Mr. Fidel, a native of Haiti and now a resident of Tampa Bay, saved the life of a very young child. At about 3:30 that afternoon, Mr. Waldo was servicing the residents along Neving Road in the Lake Magdalene area. Nothing was out of the order. By all accounts, it was a routine day. Then suddenly, while watching his in-cab screen and monitoring the emptying and compacting of trash, he was stunned to see a small boy tumble out of a large garbage bin that had been lifted high overhead and emptied into the hydraulic compactor. Seems that seven-year-old Elias Kizada, while playing, managed to climb into a gray 96-gallon trash bin and close the lid. The child was unaware of the grave danger he was in when suddenly a mechanical claw swept up the bin. The truck is designed to first process the garbage like a blender, then compact it before finally hauling it off to the incinerator. Thanks in no small part to the operational and safety training routinely conducted by Waste Connections, Waldo reacted instinctively to shut down all the truck's systems. Waldo then called 911, and while waiting for emergency rescue to arrive, he aided and comforted the child, as well as the boy's grandmother, who you can imagine was overwhelmed with dread. Miraculously, Elias, once removed from the compact, had only a minor scrape to his wrist. Mr. Kurt Salick, a director with Waste Connections, told investigators that had Mr. Fidel not acted immediately, there was little doubt that young Elias would have died and likely never found. His first quick thinking and protective actions at the B O C C, I would like to present this letter of commendation to Waldo Fidel, and it reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Waldo Fidel for his protective nature and unwavering dedication to his community, actions that have resulted in saving the life of a young boy." An 11-year driver for Waste Connections of Tampa, Mr. Fidel was servicing the residential area on February 9, 2021. Unbeknownst to him, a seven-year-old boy had climbed into a trash container and closed the lid, concealing himself from view. The truck's hydraulic arm grabbed the container, and both the garbage and the boy were deposited into the compactor. Courtesy of Waste Connections dedication to regularly train all drivers in operations and safety, Mr. Fidel looked at his surveillance camera, the procedure he was trained to do with every trash can, and discovered the boy was trapped. Thinking quickly, he secured the vehicle, turned off the power, and called 911 for assistance. Boy was rescued with only a scratch on his arm. If not for the driver's efforts, the young man would have been killed without anyone knowing what happened to him. Thanks to his decisive actions and Waste Connections commendable safety training program, Mr. Fidel was able to save the boy's life, becoming a hero to the child's family. Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Waldo Fidel for his good deeds and thanks him for helping make Hillsborough County a safe and welcoming community for all, ordered this third day of March 2021, signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners. Congratulations, Mr. Fidel. I'm sure your family and coworkers are very proud of you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Okay. Man, a few words, kind of like myself, actually.
Those very few words.
I also want to acknowledge Waste Connections District Manager Matt R. Corolla and congratulate them for their efforts to be strong corporate citizens and for the company's commitment to ongoing training of their personnel. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for sponsoring this commendation, and to all the county commissioners for taking the time to recognize and honor Mr. Waldo Fidel today. I'd also like to thank Rich Reedy and the county staff for helping to prepare and organize this presentation. Here at Waste Connections, we feel that are two things that really differentiate our company. First, our most valuable asset is our employees. Secondly, is our belief in a set of core operating values. These values provide every employee with the guideposts and a fundamental decision tree, which ultimately empowers our employees to make decisions. Our number-one core value is safety, and Waldo has clearly embodied this value and truly has taken it to heart. By embracing our safety culture and deploying his training and situational awareness, he saved a young boy's life on February 9th, a day which many people will never forget, which I know I won't. Waldo has worked for us for 11 years, spanning two contract terms over our long-held partnership in Hillsborough County. He was clearly a hero on this day, and I'm honored to serve and work with him every single day. The truth of the matter is that I'm honored to work with 140-plus other unsung heroes that dutifully serve the residents of Hillsborough County on a daily basis, and I am humbled by their dedication and their work ethic, which they display every day. I'd like to once again congratulate Mr. Manuel Waldo for your actions and his focused approach at work on a daily basis. He is a man of humility and a few words, but a man of many good deeds. Thank you again, Waldo, for everything that you do. And again, thanks to all of you for what you do every day in recognizing a true hero. Thank you.
Waldo, you are definitely a special man and a hero, and as a father of two children, you really touched my heart, and I can't thank you enough. Just, thank you again. Very much appreciate everything you've done.
And thank you so much for these commendations this morning. I think we can all speak for what a terrifying story that is, and thank you, Mr. Fidel, for stepping up. It takes us all, and that was difficult to even hear the details of. So, thank you for what you did in saving that little boy's life. So, I want to thank all our recipients for joining us today and for everything that you all have done to make Hillsborough County the best place in Florida, and certainly we'll work on being the most water-conserving place in Florida as well. And with that, can we have approval of changes to the agenda?
Move approval of the changes?
So, we have a, it was moved by Commissioner Smith and...
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I haven't gone through the, I still do. Do you need to go through the changes to the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Which we have a few today, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We have one off the agenda item, item F3, Commissioner Kemp's item, at 11:30, which is to direct the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the Mobility Fee Program Ordinance, as well as the Consolidated Impact Fee Assessment Program Ordinance for parks' impact fees, should both be paid in full. We have one correction, item prior to the change, it was A8, and now is item B7, which is the list of projects for submission to the Metropolitan Planning Organization to be included in the Transportation Improvement Program for prioritization of potential grant funding. We have one item removed from consent for highlighting by Commissioner Myers, which is item A52, which is to schedule a public hearing on April 21st for the rate resolution to be set for Water Resources Department fees and charges for potable water, wastewater, and reclaimed water services. At 9:45, item E1, we have a special appearance by U.S. Representative Kathy Castor. At 10 o'clock, D1 is to conduct a public hearing to consider enactment of an ordinance for the Renters Bill of Rights, the prohibition of source-of-income discrimination, and notice of late fees. This is related to item B1. And then, item B1 at 10:00 a.m. is to adopt a resolution approving a proposed notice of rights to be distributed by landlords and persons renting residential property as set forth in the Renters Bill of Rights, Source-of-Income Anti-Discrimination and Notice of Late Fee Ordinance, related to item D1. Item D2 is to hold the first public hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance providing for an extension of the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings for WVR2 for the Wyomama Village Residential 2. Item D3 is a first public hearing to consider an ordinance providing for an extension of the moratorium for residential planned RP2 land use category until December 31st, 2021. Item D4 is to conduct the, excuse me, conduct the first of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportion and share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Engineering Analysis Group for the Doug Creek Townhomes. At 10:15, item E2 is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19 and the local state of emergency. Item E3 at 10:45 is a special appearance by outside counsel Alan Zimmatt of Bryant Miller Olive to provide an update on the Transportation Certax Florida Supreme Court ruling. Item F1 at 11 o'clock, Commissioner Myers' item, to direct the county attorney's office to collaborate with county administration to prepare the appropriate documents to enable a 1% transportation sales certax referendum. Item G1 at 11:15 is to receive a report regarding the use of phosphogypsum in road construction. Item F3, Commissioner Kemp's item, at 11:30, to direct the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the Mobility Fee Program Ordinance, amending the phase and schedule, and to direct the county attorney's office to amend the Consolidated Impact Assessment Program Ordinance for parks' impact fees. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to approve the changes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero?
Thank you. Now, we'll move to public comments. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time, when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at issues. This provides a mutual respect between board members and the public. The board sets aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The chair will call own speakers by name in order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis, and audio call and number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the chair by name. You have up to three minutes allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. And when addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Thank you. We'll move first to Christine Quinn. Ms. Quinn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Quinn is not holding yet.
I'm sorry. I'm having a little trouble hearing what you said.
Ms. Quinn is not on the line.
Okay. Thank you. Gerald White?
Good morning, Commissioners. Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist. First, I'd like to thank U.S. Representative Kathy Castor for getting the Greyhound track COVID-19 site in place. We really appreciate her work, and it's great to see the federal government working very closely with the local community. Second, I wanted to thank County Commissioner Ken Hagan, who represents the Board of Commissioners on the Sports Authority. He and the Sports Authority have had success bringing home another Super Bowl for Tampa, Hillsborough County, and Commissioner Hagan has been our sportsman as it relates to government, and so you have to give credit where credit is due. Commissioner Ken Hagan, thank you for your work. We really appreciate it as citizens, and keep it going. I'm here today on agenda item F1, Commissioner Myers, and F3, the update from the Supreme Court on the 1% tax, the $500 million. We appreciate the Supreme Court's work, but I'm a strong supporter of that 1% tax. I encourage and support Commissioner Myers to push that as hard as she can to get that on the ballot, as she said, in the agenda item, as soon as possible. And also, I would like the entire board to work in every capacity as possible to keep that $500 million. I voted for the tax. Supreme Court has thrown out the ballot question, but I want my money that I pay in sales tax to be used for transportation, to work in all diligence to keep that money and put that money to work as far as improving the roads here in Hillsborough County. Thank you for your work, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Otusi, Otusa Amiri?
Yes. Good morning.
You're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Otusa. Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning. My name is Otusa Amiri, and I'm a senior manager for Mosaic and a Hillsborough County resident. I'm an engineer, and in my role, I focus on process water management for Mosaic's manufacturing facilities. I join you today to add some additional science and research and form background to the upcoming staff presentation later this morning on the future use of phosphogypsum or PG as a sustainable material for road base. The fertilizer industry, as an fertilizer that helps the farmers grow the food you count on every day, is very proud that current updated real-time science is finally center-staged for the beneficial use of PG as concerns. As a country and as a community, we're coming to this conversation very late. The United States EPA's actions last fall in approving PG for use for road base finally aligned the U.S. with longstanding international goals for use of gypsum. The goal of ICA, which is International Fertilizer Association, is 100% use of PG by the year 2030. Around the globe, PG use in roads and concrete has undergone extensive analysis over many years and is considered safe. This has resulted in the beneficial use of PG to the tune of 35 to 40 million times a year without any issues. Consider these numbers. 21 countries are either actively using gypsum or evaluating for use in 55 different ways. Brazil and Belgium use 100% of PG. India and China are aggressively pursuing the same goal. These uses and decisions are all informed by science. Other examples, Canada uses PG for agriculture, afforestation, carbon sequestration. Finland uses it in roads and banklands forestry and agriculture. And by the way, PG is a suitable material for road base because it's very durable and a good substitute for other naturally mined products. This is also part of the bigger worldwide environmental movement and, quite frankly, critical need aiming for zero waste across multiple fronts. EPA's decision was based on extensive data and research. EPA's approval was a critical milestone in using PG in roads, but it's not the only one. States, including Florida, have authority over beneficial waste use and materials used in roads, and the industry still needs to obtain relevant state authorizations, which will take some time to secure. Those issues and a pending legal challenge mean actual PG use in roads is not imminent. Ironically, many other groups opposed to using PG also oppose stacking it. It's impossible to know what the real agenda of those groups is, but a couple of things are certain. If they endorse science-based decisions, they would support not oppose PG in road construction, and beneficial use will make the industry more competitive with foreign producers, which are subject to rudimentary environmental standards at best. My team has been meeting with the staff and the commissioners along the way, and of course, will keep you updated on any new developments. Beneficial use is a responsible and sustainable choice. That's why Mosaic is so encouraged by EPA's recent actions and Hillsborough County's interest. This isn't about politics and shouldn't be a vehicle for attempting to stir panic.
I'm sorry. Your time is up.
It's time for you to join many of us.
I'm sorry. Your time is up, Ms. Amiri.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
David Sigler?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and meeting members. My name, again, is David Sigler. I have been a Hillsborough County taxpayer here for over 20 years and have been involved in the real estate industry for almost 15 of those years. I currently own a real estate brokerage here in Hillsborough County that represents hundreds of rental property owners. I also personally own several rentals here locally. I am also a past NARPO National Association of Property Manager, state president, and the current legislative chair. I share this with you as a background of the items D1 that are on the agenda today. We, I believe, as an industry, and me personally, are definitely in favor of a bill of rights for our tenants. We understand the importance of them being aware of what is going on, what their rights are, and actually, our relationship with them is symbiotic in that they are important to our success and what we do as a business, but also to the individual property owners that we manage the properties for. Without successful relationship here, our business does not exist, and our owners do not have rentals for these other people to rent. So, we completely understand that, and also do not discriminate. You know, this bill, I think, is stepping beyond its means. Both my personal values and professional values do not allow us to discriminate based on an individual, and that's not what this is about. We should be able to choose with the system that we work with and work with any and all individuals, and we welcome them to apply. As long as they meet the criteria, we are more than happy to work with them and create solutions. However, forcing a system that can be cumbersome and difficult at times to work with should be the choice of the individual homeowner. Many of these homeowners, this is their college kids, their kids' college tuition, this might be their retirement, this might be the house that they're going to give to their son or daughter when they get married. So, these are not big people with big incomes. They're relying on that rent. So, how they receive that rent in a timely manner and the requirements around that are very critical, again, to the success here. The unintended consequences that this could produce that we foresee happening is a reduction in the number of rentals that are currently on... of the individual homeowner. Many of these homeowners, this is their college kids, their kids' college tuition. This might be their retirement. This might be the house that they're going to give to their son or daughter when they get married. So these are not big people with big incomes. They're relying on that rent. So how they receive that rent in a timely manner and the requirements around that are very critical, again, to the success here. The unintended consequences that this could produce that we foresee happening is a reduction in the number of rentals that are currently on the market, which I believe is working just the opposite of what the intention here is. So, you know, I believe there's many things here that show that it is more important that we work together for a solution that does not have these unintended consequences with the people directly involved in the industry to form a better solution that will solve the potential problems. Discrimination of the individual is not what we're about. Discrimination of a system being imposed on us is something. I believe the hundreds of emails that were sent out to the Commissioners by individuals opposing this should be representative of that. We understand the intent. We want to work with that intent to find a solution with unintended consequences and will benefit the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Strom?
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Strom. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, and I'm also a housing researcher. I'm calling today to support Item B1, the Renters' Bill of Rights. My understanding is that what you are discussing today is the Bill of Rights and the need to notify tenants of their rights and not the issue of source of income discrimination that the previous caller discussed. So I am addressing that notification. So the issue is that Hillsborough County has about 42% of its units rented rather than owned, and on average, our renting population is drawn from the more vulnerable of our residents. Research on evictions finds that many renters who lose their homes never understood their rights, and further finds that nine out of 10 tenants facing eviction do not have a lawyer. While some rights and responsibilities are spelled out in a standard lease form, leases are usually several pages of legalese that are hard for most people to interpret. And furthermore, standard lease forms are not required, and some landlords do not use them. Landlords who play by the rules should have no concern about an effort to inform tenants of their rights. Florida is, according to research, among the least tenant-friendly states in the country. Let's level the playing field just a bit by making sure tenants actually know what rights they have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Wilson?
Mr. Wilson has not called in and identified.
Thank you. Rick Fiffer?
Mr. Fiffer has also not called in and identified.
Thank you. Freddie Barton?
Good morning.
Good morning. You're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Freddie Barton, Executive Director of Safe and Sound Hillsborough, also a resident of Hillsborough County, as well as youth advocate and mentor. As you all know, we are the Violence Prevention Collaborative in Hillsborough County that was formed to utilize a public health approach to prevent violence, particularly youth violence. We're very grateful for the partnership with the Board in Hillsborough County that has allowed us to be able to provide quality programming, address critical issues, and create positive pathways for those who are most at risk. Our vision statement sums up how we can and will succeed, which is working together to build strong families, safe schools, and healthy neighborhoods. I'm here to address Item F2 that will speak directly to this. Item F2 directs staff to assist in expanding services for an Evening Reporting Center, or ERC, that Safe and Sound Hillsborough recently opened in partnership with the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice. The ERC is an evidence-based alternative to pre-adjudicatory incarceration for youth offenders. While awaiting court, youth are placed on home detention, and during the critical hours between 2:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., they're at the ERC receiving academic support, individual and group counseling, vocational exposure, and most of all mentoring with two major goals and outcomes: no failure to appears and no new charges while at the ERC. The youth also are monitored and receive support beyond their time at the ERC through a connected mentorship program that Safe and Sound is partnered in at the Public Defender's Office spearheads. As you all know, we've seen an increase in shootings and gun-related offenses recently, particularly involving some youth. We know that we have to move upstream to work with our youth as early as possible to change their trajectory. The ERC is located in the east part of Tampa near the fairgrounds, which is a central location based upon the data that shows where the youth that offend are coming from. Our public defender, Mrs. Julian Holt, who also is the Leadership Council Chair of Safe and Sound, our State Attorney Andrew Warren, Court Administrator Gina Justice, as well as our juvenile judges, all agree and recognize the importance of this ERC as a way to turn youth around. We ask that this Board support Item F2 and direct staff to work with us to support expanding services at our ERC, which will include job placement services, increased programming, and expanded mentorship opportunities. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Louis Viera?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Good to speak to all my friends on the County Commission today, and thank you, Chair Kemp, for your leadership. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to speak briefly, if I may, in strong support of Commissioner Gwen Myers' proposal to begin talks and study on having a penny tax transportation initiative to take to the voters in 2022. Though I know there's many different opinions on this, and I respect all the opinions and people bringing those opinions, I think that when you look at this issue objectively with regard to our needs throughout the county and throughout our different local communities, that there's only one way that you can really come out, and that's in strong support of this penny tax investment. This is a penny tax that takes care of not our wants, but our needs here in the city of Tampa and throughout Hillsborough County. This is an issue of economic development, which is why so many local business organizations were in strong support of this. And this is also an issue for working families who are spending too much time and too much of their daily bread, so to speak, on transportation. Our county and our community is vocally underfunded whenever it comes to transportation, and to say we're running behind on mass transit is quite the understatement. And I would also like to remind folks, as we all know, that almost three in five residents, or voters, I should say, supported this initiative. I would also point to the 33647 zip code of New Tampa within my district, which is known as a purple area politically, and over 60% of voters supported this initiative in 2018. That means Democrats, that means independents, that means Republicans coming together for common sense, for business development, and for help for working families. So I would urge all my good friends on the County Commission to please support this, and thank you very much, and I hope you all have a great day.
Thank you. Thomas Hills?
Good morning, everyone. I'm calling on behalf of the Y-Green PAC. I'm a financial counselor and resident of Ruskin. I had a major air conditioning issue, performance too low, bills too high. I finally needed to replace it. Y-Green came to my rescue. A program with great terms and friendly, informative staff that got me through the process, resulting in a new AC to meet my family's Florida summer needs, borrowing my electric bill with an affordable $70 a month payment. But I call to say that even with great terms, good service, and process guidance means nothing without access. Being able to secure funds without perfect credit or more consumer commercial debt, but being able to add home improvements to property taxes broadens access. For some, this might be a convenience, another option among many, but to others, this is a godsend. Access to such funding, I believe, should be increased, not decreased. I come from a community that has always had restrictions for many years to access, especially the capital. I believe that the biggest problem I find with Y-Green is that enough people don't know about it. This came into my life at a very pivotal point. We were doing well, but we've been hit COVID also in our finances. And Y-Green worked within our budget and within the practicalities of how we could do the financing. I find many people, including other family members, that would do well with such an opportunity if the opportunity remains in Hillsborough County. I would suggest that access, especially for those who are underserved, should always be increased. I believe that if everybody, if more people knew about the terms, availabilities, how these things could take place for home improvement, with the home being our greatest investment, with the home being our place of safety and security, that it's a win-win for everybody, an ability to maintain a well-kept community and access. That's not big. It's great to have access to the funding. So once again, I say that Y-Green and the PAC funding has been a blessing and a godsend to my family. I'm a strong believer in community, and I believe it will be a strong impact access on underserved people. And to that, I thank you for listening.
Thank you. And finally, Mary Jane Staggy?
Good morning. I'm Mary Jane Staggy. I am also calling in response and support to the Y-Green PAC program. I've been in real estate for 32 years. I've lived in Tampa since 1968. I actually learned about the program through a client that was ecstatic about it because raising three children and needing a new roof that is around $25,000 was like a major problem. And her roofing company told her about the PAC program and Y-Green. It's a great asset. It's a way for people to improve their homes or maintain their homes without having to go through a banking institution, without having it affect their credit report. The fact that you have an extended time period to pay it back and that they work with you on that, it helps the home with energy efficiency because you can use it for air conditionings and windows and doors and roofs. I personally plan on using it. I need to replace four air conditioners in my personal home instead, and I would like to use it. So I am in major support of that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else for public comment at this time?
That will be all for the general public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll move now to the consent agenda. I know that Commissioner Myers, who was stated, has removed A52 for highlighting. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank Assistant County Administrator Joyce Cassidy for an excellent workshop on water and wastewater last week. And also to inform the public, Agenda Item A52 is for a public hearing scheduled for April 21st, 2021, on new rates that the county would be considering. So I just want to be transparent and bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think we all agree that Mr. Cassidy does great workshops with a lot of information. Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to move the consent agenda?
Approved.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, do we have a second?
Second.
And Commissioner Smith. Okay. And with the moving of the consent agenda, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And it is that time for our regular agenda, and we will... Ms. Wise, can you direct us now?
Thank you. It's 9:45, and I'm looking to see if Congresswoman Castor is on the line at this time.
Wow, we hit that right on the mark, didn't we?
We do know that the Congresswoman is in session, and so we had to be flexible with her time.
Mm-hmm.
If the HTV staff could let us know if she's on the line.
For the public, it might be good for them. We have a special appearance this morning by U.S. Representative Kathy Castor. So we're just kind of, I guess, standing by for a few minutes to see. It's kind of a little bit of a flex arrangement.
Exactly. It does not appear that she is there, so we will take her as soon as she is able and available. All right. So with that, we can move on to the regular agenda?
Yes.
And the first one is going to be Item B2. This is going to be a presentation by Jim Taylor with Government Relations and Strategic Services to discuss our federal legislative program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Taylor, your Government Relations Division Director. Item B2 is your 2021 federal legislative program. As I've mentioned in the state presentation a month and a half ago, the same process to establish this program was used for your federal program, working with our directors, our executive team, and of course, you and your staff. So thank you so much for all of your input. We look forward to working these issues. We've already begun many of these issues as they are roll over from last year. So with that, I seek approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman and others. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Item B3, and Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget Director, will present this item. This is related to our commercial paper program.
Thank you. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. B3 asks you to adopt a resolution in the form presented in approving and amending and restating fee letter, First Amendment to revolving credit agreement, both with FG Union Bank, County's capital improvement program and commercial paper notes, to provide for an extension of the agreement from April 2nd, 2021, to the law, 1/20/21, and authorizing the payment of fees and expenses provided for in the agreement and fee letter. And also to authorize a direct clerk amendment to clarify costs associated with transaction. This extension will allow the time to bring forth a new provider for the paper program.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner White, Commissioner Myers, seconded, and seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item also to be presented by Mr. Bricki is Item B4 regarding the Hillsborough County Wastewater Impact Fee Assessment Special Assessment Revenue Bonds.
Thank you. Commissioners, B4 asks you to adopt a supplemental resolution, amending and supplementing Resolution Number R20101, adopted on October 21st, 2020, to provide for the issuance of Hillsborough County Florida Wastewater Impact Fee Assessment Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2021 for 43 minutes, in the aggregate amount of not to exceed $85 million. This is to pay the cost of specified capital improvements to the county's waste water system related to the expansion of the system, additional wastewater capacity, and fixing the certain details of the bonds, and awarding the award and sale of the bonds on a negotiated basis to Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated on behalf of itself, Bank of America Securities, Wells Market Securities, the underwriters and seeing such other details pursuant to the bond agreement, appointing the clerk as paying agent and registrar for the bonds, and approving the form and authorizing the distribution of the preliminary official statement and authorizing the execution and delivery of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Myers?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White, seeing no further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item B5, which is to approve a resolution with the University Area Community Development Corporation for a splash pad and other approvals. Mr. Bricki will present this item as well.
Thank you. Board Members, B5 indeed does ask that you approve a resolution allocating up to $674,500 to the University. to the University Area Community Development Corporation to assist with the construction of a splash pad and other associated improvements at Harvest Oak Park, and other improvements for the county's University Area Community Center. And also to approve the funding agreements for those same improvements at the park and the UACDC. The UACDC has agreed to be responsible for the maintenance and operating costs of these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Okay. I think I heard who moved it. I heard Commissioner Overman second. Okay. We have... Can we have just... I just didn't hear who made the motions. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith made the motion, Commissioner Overman second. And with that, seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And the final item for Mr. Bricki is Item B6, and this is a budget amendment to receive the money received from the federal government for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Thank you. Commissioners, B6 asks you to approve an FY21 budget amendment to appropriate the $32,377,870 Hillsborough County received from the U.S. Treasury for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that the federal government has implemented. As part of this emergency rental assistance, payments were made to local governments with populations over 200,000. This $32.4 million will be available until December 31st, 2021. Not less than 90% of the funds will be used by financial assistance, and more than 10% of the funds may be used for housing stability services and to cover administrative expenses. We ask that you approve this amendment.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith to move approval. Can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. We can see you've been working hard, Mr. Bricki.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next item is Item B7. This is the item that was removed from consent, and John Patrick, Community and Infrastructure Planning, will present this item. This is the list of projects to be presented to the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. The agenda item before you is to approve the list of projects to be submitted to the MPO for including them in the upcoming Transportation Improvement Program, also called TIP. The MPO Transportation Improvement Program is updated annually, and the MPO requests priority projects from all jurisdictions and heart. The projects are then prioritized by the MPO. This year, we are looking at submitting five projects in total. Three of them are from previous years, and two are new projects. Here are the five criteria for screening of the projects that we bring to you for your approval, Commissioners. The projects... The first one is the project should be eligible for DOT grants. They are not immediate needs because the funding is available only in the outer years. The projects are in the current CIP and are looking for funding, additional funding in the future years or future phases. Can we leverage the investment by other agencies that is complementary projects? Better bang for the buck, basically. And there are other factors that we consider in the projects that are like new schools or county initiatives that we undertake. So those are the five criteria that we use for screening at the staff level to bring it to you, Commissioners. And here, the table here is the projects based on that five criteria. I want to point out to you that the highlighted parts, that is the new updated cost that we just received, so we just want to make sure that it's on the record. And we'll just go through very briefly the projects that we have, the five projects we have, for your recommendation and approval. Big Bend Road, that is from Covington Garden Drive to Simmons Luke Road, and Covington Garden, US 41 to Covington Garden Drive, and Simmons Luke Road to 301, which is the bookends of the projects of Big Bend Road, which is going to be under construction soon. And we are looking to supplement the funding for this project. Gibson Drive Widening, it's a Vision Zero corridor. DOT is investing in fixing the interchange of Gibson Drive and I-75. So we are seeking funding to complement this interchange improvement by widening Gibson Drive. The projects that is already in the TIP are Baum Road Widening Project. This is to alleviate the traffic from Sumner High School and also developments in the area. The Suncoast Greenville Trail Project is we are seeking fund for construction. The PDNE study is underway. The segment is from Sims Road to Big Bend Road. And the last one is a truck route plan update. We are asking that MPO dedicate funds for updating the study. Just going briefly, here are the locations of these projects, Commissioners. Big Bend Road, as I said, is the bookend of Big Bend Road. The other project is Gibson Drive from I-75, I-75 to 301. The third one that is already in the TIP, as I mentioned earlier, is Baum Road from US 301 to Clement Pride Road. That little dot that you see there actually is the Sumner High School, which is within the segment of Baum Road. And the last project, transportation project, is the trail from Big Bend Road to Sims Road, which will extend the Suncoast Trail beyond where it ends right now on Big Bend Road. So those are the... And then there's the truck route plan, which is a code-wide plan. So these are the projects. And here is the list of projects that we submitted previously in the previous years. And the ones that is highlighted in yellow, we have received grant funding for these projects, and hence we have new projects that we are adding for grant funding. And so hence, Commissioner, the staff recommendation is to approve this list of projects to submit to the MPO to be included in the FY21, 22, 25, 26 Transportation Improvement Program for prioritization and potential grant funding. This submittal affirms three projects that were previously submitted to the MPO but are not currently funded, and also includes two projects, two new projects. That is all from me, Commissioners. We are available for any questions.
Move approval.
Thank you. And I think we do have a few questions. Commissioner White just moved approval, so I'll note that with a second by Commissioner Smith. I just wanted to say it's a new day, I think. I think it was very important to have this, the TIP proposals presented to us here at the BOCC. As I've noted through a few meetings, I never understood, being on the MPO, we would suddenly get priorities by the county and by Hart as well. And they were never discussed at the respective boards here at the County Commission or Hart, and I did not understand how they were generated without any discussion at those bodies. And what I found out is that they had been, I don't know for how long, but traditionally staff-generated without running by the board. And we ran into some issues at our MPO meeting, and they went on past midnight one night because five Commissioners are on the MPO board, and we didn't know about the county's priorities until the afternoon of that meeting. So we've changed that up, and I'm really... I thought it was a really good presentation, and we start to move, I think, in the direction that this board has wanted to see. I've often thought that we, with transportation being one of our number-one issues, we spend little of our commission time actually looking at specific projects and noting them. And I also, I didn't in briefing get to see that map, so I liked that map as well. I thought it was well done. So, Mr. Patrick, thank you. Good job. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I want to echo your comments. Having the board actually see the list prior to submittal, even though it may have been on consent, it gives us an opportunity to really focus on those projects that are critical to our success in the county. It also gives us an opportunity to focus on not only state legislation, but to publicly acknowledge that we need to also pursue federal grant applications with these types of projects when they are actually on the list of available grants. So this is a great way to make sure that not only we, but also the public are aware, as well as our legislature, that these are our priorities when it comes to our transportation improvement plan. So thank you very much for moving this forward.
Thank you. So seeing no other comments, I don't believe, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And I have been communicating with Congresswoman Castor's office. She was called for a vote just about the 9:45. They appreciated that we were able to get close to that, but it looks like it's maybe after our next item.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Our next item, we're going to go to our first public hearing, which is Item D1, which is regarding the Renters' Bill of Rights, to be known as the Tenants' Bill of Rights. And Nancy Takamori from the County Attorney's Office will present this item.
Good morning, Nancy Takamori with the County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing on a Bill of Rights ordinance which impacts the relationship between landlords and tenants in residential rental transactions. It has been properly noticed. The ordinance does three things. First, it requires landlords to provide a required notice of rights and resources to tenants. Second, it prohibits discrimination in residential rental transactions based on lawful source of income. And third, it requires landlords to provide tenants with notice of late fees before imposing such fees. Regarding the first part of the ordinance, the required notice of rights and resources, the ordinance provides that the actual document that landlords would be required to provide to tenants be adopted by a resolution. Therefore, should this ordinance be adopted today, the next item on your agenda after the public hearing would be B1, which would be consideration of a resolution to adopt the actual notice. And I just want to point out two things about this part of the ordinance. First, regarding timing, the current version of the ordinance requires that the notice be given to tenants prior to occupancy of a rental unit. And also, the current draft of the ordinance does apply to existing tenants, that is tenants in place as of the effective date of the ordinance, and they would have to be provided with a copy of the notice at the earlier renewal of their lease or June 30th of 2021. Regarding the second part of the ordinance, that's the source of income anti-discrimination provision. In accordance with the board's direction at the last meeting, we've added trust income and investment income to the definition of lawful source of income. And as there has been some concern about this section of the ordinance, especially with respect to Section 8 or housing choice voucher holders, I'd like to note that if this ordinance is approved, landlords would remain free not to rent to voucher holders, provided that they do so based upon other legitimate nondiscriminatory grounds, such as an applicant's rental history or credit report. In addition, the Section 8 program requires participants to rent to units with rental costs within a particular range. If a landlord charges rents that are too high for the program, the ordinance does not require the landlord to reduce their rent in order to permit voucher holders to rent those units. Finally, at the board's direction at the last meeting, we've added a third section to the ordinance requiring landlords to provide notice of late fees. This is a separate section... This is a separate notice that landlords would be required to provide to tenants prior to assessing a late fee. It would give them notice of the late fee, the grounds for imposing the fee, the amount of the fee, and whether it will keep accruing. It's not a form document that the county will generate, so it's something the landlord would provide. The new late fee section of the ordinance in your draft does not contain certain language that is in the two other sections of the ordinance, essentially providing a grace period until July 1st, 2021, before penalties are assessed, and also providing that there is no private right of action for violating this section. However, I understand that the intent was to include this language consistent with the other sections of the ordinance. And so at your direction, I will add that into the ordinance, and it wouldn't impact your ability to adopt the ordinance today. In conclusion, this is a public opinion, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. That was a pretty thorough outline of what's before us, so thank you for that. And we have a number of the members of the public sign to speak to this, so I'm just going to start recognizing those members. They have three minutes to speak to this item. Please just identify yourself when you're speaking. Alan Borden.
Yes, this is Alan Borden.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Thanks. And thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. So I've been a Tampa resident and bankruptcy attorney for 12 years here in the Tampa area. I've seen thousands, tens of thousands, really, of clients over the years, and know how important it is that this anti-discrimination statute be enforced and be here in the county. From my experience, I've seen people from all kinds of walks of life. I think what you can... The biggest takeaway from my experience as a bankruptcy attorney is that most of us, the far majority of us, are one unfortunate event from being in a position where we need to rely on assistance, whether it's from the government or friends or family, to be able to support ourselves and to move forward. This kind of anti-discrimination statute, which allows the Section 8 vouchers to be used and can't be turned down by landlords based on that particular purpose, would allow greater access to many people who need that kind of help, especially in a time when we are already going through a housing crisis. If you look at the U.S. News and World Report and U.S. Census, over the last 10 years, rents have increased by 36% from 2009 to 2019. So it's getting harder and harder to find places to rent. So more availability is essential. And comparing that to the, yes, sometimes the regulatory things that landlords would have to go through if they're going to rent to someone in Section 8, the access to housing far outweighs the disadvantages that would come to landlords because of this. And a lot of... And in the situation where we are now after COVID, I'm sure there's a lot of landlords who would be happy to have access to much... To have that greater access and be made aware that they can rent to Section 8 housing and get some kind of stable income from that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Nyström?
Hello, good to see you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm an economist, a professor of grad zero, a special magistrate, and I have 13 rental units, so I'm very familiar with every P roll. I saw world problems for the UN and publishing right now. But anyway, so I know this very, very well. There's a lot... There's a lot of negatives to this. The actual... The noticing is not a problem at all. The forcing people to accept Section 8 and go through all of those processes does create problems. It actually creates distortions in the economy. Small businesses, small business owners won't necessarily be able easily comply with it. They may not have the funds to fit the criteria of Section 8. They may well be forced out of the market. And then those properties would almost assuredly go up the chain to the big corporate place. to the big corporate players. You're sort of attacking small business in favor of big corporations like this route. Also, changing the rental market, you're changing the tenant, changing the value of these properties. Contracts are written and managed and administered. This is changing and altering the economy around small apartments. When you distort your economy in a section that has apartments, that apartments are housing and real estate and human capital, the value of the people is 80, 90, 100, 100, in every town in this world. Yes, I've done the math on this and presented around the world. The distortions cost negative tests throughout the economy that you the damage you can cause by overregulating an industry like this that's built and working on the free market, it's all, the damage is a lot more than you see on the street. So I do agree with the last speaker. I think this is significantly negative effect. There are other ways to solve this problem besides parking. You could have an insurance program where your landlords are insured against a loss. Don't have to go through stuff. You could rent the units from us, the county can't rent the units, using our contracts and going through JAA. Does anybody here think that the Section 8 program is ready for double, triple, or quadruple the amounts of business that come their way? And if that all, you know, if that all costs, then, and all of the force work to a system is not ready to handle all that new influx, you're creating a whole new
Your time is up, sir.
In about a year.
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Dougal, Dougal?
Andrew, are you there?
Yes.
Commissioners, my name is Andrew Dougal, and I've lived in Hillsborough County for over 36 years. I'm also a landlord, a realtor, and a residential property manager. Do you know that a third of all the residential properties in our county are rental homes owned by small private landlords? A small private landlord is a private citizen who owns less than four properties. They are mom-and-pop landlords, and most of them just own a single rental property. I support the Notice of Rights and the Late Fee Notice in the proposed ordinance, but not the Source of Income. The Source of Income language in the ordinance will require these small private landlords, who provide a third of all the housing in this county, to contract with the federal government if they want to rent their property going forward. The problem is, the Federal Housing Assistance Program is beset with inefficiencies and bureaucracy. It's going to be an administrative and regulatory burden on them, and it's also going to reduce their rental income. Small private landlords own rental properties for many reasons, but usually it's to invest for their future needs, such as retirement, healthcare costs, or their children's college education. These mom-and-pop landlords, they've been through a lot in the last year with coronavirus. When our tenants were affected and could not afford the rent, we worked with them to keep them in their homes, and it was the mom-and-pop landlords that took the financial hit. There was no bailout for them. They aren't sophisticated corporations with deep pockets, and many are licking their wounds financially. If the Source of Income language in the ordinance is going, if there is a Source of Income language in the ordinance, they are going to be accused of discrimination if they don't want to contract with the federal government. My concern is that many small private landlords are going to think this is the last straw, and they decide they no longer want to be landlords. This is a huge unintended consequence as these are the providers of a third of all Hillsborough County citizens' housing. The unintended consequences are, it's going to reduce the amount of rental properties in the county and thereby increase the cost to rent and make it harder to work and live in our county. It's going to affect the property tax base as real estate investors look outside our county to invest. I believe we can find a better way to do this that uses a carrot rather than a stick. Please don't include the Source of Income language in the proposed ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Garduno?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Eric Garduno, the Government Affairs Director for the Bay Area Apartment Association. We represent the apartment industry in the Greater Tampa Bay region. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. Much of the language in this ordinance is similar to the ordinance passed in 2019 by the city of St. Petersburg. We ultimately supported that ordinance and would like to be able to do the same here. We think it is a good idea for residents to know their rights, which we believe this notice can certainly help promote. There are, however, some important differences in the ordinance before you. For instance, the St. Pete ordinance only applied the signed acknowledgment by residents of receipt of the notice of rights going forward in new leases and lease renewals, despite whatever efforts we make. And we certainly are willing to do everything we can, but we're not confident we can get 100% of current residents to sign the required acknowledgment. There is nothing in this ordinance that would compel them to do so if they chose not to. So putting landlords at risk of fines because a resident may choose not to sign the acknowledgment isn't fair and doesn't further the public policy objective underlying this notice. Another key difference in this ordinance is that it does incorporate provisions elevating Source of Income to a protected class. St. Pete considered a similar measure and ultimately decided not to include it. We respectfully ask you to do the same. We believe it will put significant costs and burdens on rental properties not currently accounted for. Equally important, if this policy will actually help, indeed, there's a lot of evidence, anecdotal evidence out there that people on government assistance programs could actually have a more difficult time finding housing under such an ordinance. In the event that you do decide to keep this portion of the ordinance, we do ask you to provide a delay in its implementation to give landlords time to learn and understand the implications of these new requirements. This will be particularly important as it relates to government assistance programs, which are often complex and difficult to navigate, and will require multiple modules of training for folks to come up to speed. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sean Wilson?
Good morning, Madam Chair and other county commissioners. My name is Sean Wilson. I'm the president of Blue Sky Communities. We are at 5300 West Cypress Street in Tampa. I want to thank the board for all their support for our endeavors in the past. Of course, we have the portfolio of 504 units of affordable housing in unincorporated Hillsborough County, a portfolio that's growing. And much of that is due to support from the county. I applaud the Commission for moving towards removing some of the last messages of discrimination that exist in law and practice, and these permeate many areas of the law. And this is, this is a prime example that needs to be addressed. And I think that there are some proper carve-outs for the more objectionable items that most reputable landlords should be able to implement in a fairly efficient manner. I think that we do in other cities and counties adhere to ordinance similar to this. So, so I, Blue Sky Community supports this ordinance. And, you know, there are some people that are not going to like it because it's additional regulation, that's true. But it's needed, and the time is now to do something like this. So again, I support the ordinance. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Luis Pabon Gomez?
Hi, Luis Pabon. I'm a citizen of Hillsborough County and a former renter. I just want to express support for item B1, the Renters' Bill of Rights. Renters have it rough in this country, and I'm glad to see our local government address the power imbalance they have with their landlord. There is plenty of overlap between protected classes and the need for housing vouchers. And without this ordinance, landlords only have to change a couple words, and suddenly it's fine for them to discriminate. I was surprised to read that this was not implemented already. I think that at the end of the day, as long as the terms of the lease are met, the Source of Income should not matter. Thank you.
Thank you. David Graham?
Madam Chair, David Graham has not called in.
Okay, that's my last name. Is there anyone out there?
Yes, we, I believe we have three, three other people that have called in. Are we at Jacob Brunel?
Yes.
Yes, Jacob Brunel, Director of Government Affairs at Greater Tampa Realtors. Good morning, Commissioners. Greater Tampa Realtors applaud your efforts to ensure a healthy relationship between landlords and tenants in Hillsborough County by proposing a Renters' Bill of Rights. Although we find most of the proposed ordinance language agreeable, we humbly request the language prohibiting discrimination against renters based on lawful source of income, specifically Section 8 vouchers, be removed due to several unintended consequences. In Hillsborough County, over 40% of residential properties are rental homes. Nationally, 80% of single-family rental properties are owned by private landlords that own less than four properties. Hillsborough County is arguably similar. This means that most single-family rental properties are owned by mom-and-pops, not large corporations. This is over one-third of all residential property in Hillsborough County. These landlords own rental properties for several reasons, but generally, it is to invest for their future needs, such as retirement, healthcare, and education. Requiring small private landlords to contract with the federal government is going to be an administrative and regulatory burden and will reduce rental income. Some of our members have experienced reduced income expectations of up to 7% on federal housing assistance payment properties, a large number for a small landlord. This Source of Income ordinance has the potential to, one, reduce the size of the real estate sales market, affecting property values and the local economy. Many trade and professions depend on the local real estate economy for their livelihood, such as builders, general contractors, lenders, real estate agents, and title companies. Two, it can reduce the amount of available rental properties in the county and thereby increase the cost to rent and make it harder to work and live in the county. Three, it can affect property tax base as real estate investors look outside the county to invest. The stated reason for the new ordinance is to prevent housing discrimination. This is a very important goal, and if it is the actual reason, we believe there are better ways to achieve it. One way, adopted in the city of St. Petersburg, is to give a disclosure to tenants at lease signing so they clearly understand their rights. Other ways are to make the Federal Housing Assistance Program more attractive to landlords by, one, reducing the inefficiencies and bureaucracy; two, make it less time-consuming for a landlord to participate in the program; and three, offering rents that compete with the private rental market. We invite county staff to meet with us to craft an ordinance that helps tenants without hurting the small private landlords that provide one-third of all housing in the county. We look forward to your deliberations.
Thank you.
I believe with your blessing, we actually could go to Angel DeAngelo?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. My name is Angel DeAngelo, born and raised in Hillsborough County, and I am a present-day renter. I'm hearing a lot of landlords that sound like they need to pick themselves up by the bootstraps. We have a lot of people in Hillsborough County that work for less than survival wages, and we're just told to deal with it. So I think they can deal with a 7% income law. Let's be real about the real problem is, they just don't want to accept Section 8 renters, which are majority black, brown, and poor, as well as disabled. They want to keep a certain look. We know how it goes. They're just going to have to accept it one way or another. This is the way we're going to have to move because we have a housing crisis in Hillsborough County. I 100% support the Tenant Bill of Rights, 100% as written, including the Notice of Rights and the illegality of discrimination. It's baffling to me that people have the audacity to come onto a public record and say, hey, could y'all let us discriminate a little bit more? I don't even think they hear themselves speaking. But we have to move past that. So I hope all seven of these Commissioners will support the tenants. The work you all have been doing for homeowners has been great. I'm not a homeowner yet. I can't afford to be one. So I'd like to make sure my rights are protected and the rights of people who have a lot less privilege than I do. Thank you so much.
And finally, we could go to our last caller, Sharon Graham.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sharon Graham, and I'm a Hillsborough County resident of 12 years and a former renter. I am also a business owner of eight years in Hillsborough County, who chooses to live here and facilitate jobs and build a team serving our community because of its beauty and potential. I am here to urge your strong support of the full Renters' Bill of Rights as presented today. In Hillsborough County, landlords are allowed to discriminate against people who pay their rent with rental assistance vouchers from programs such as Section 8 or Veterans Assistance Programs. Often, the advertisements for rental properties blatantly say, quote, "Now Section 8 tenants," end quote. We need to put an end to the discriminatory practices that create barriers to housing in the faces of so many families who are struggling financially right now, some even facing homelessness, although they are fully capable of paying their rent with rental assistance vouchers. This is a racial justice issue as the majority of families receiving housing choice vouchers are black. This presents yet another barrier that some families of color face when looking for housing. Just as landlords cannot turn people away based on race, religion, or sexual preference, we should prevent discrimination against this segment of our community. Many other counties have enacted similar policies, including Miami-Dade and Broward, as well as over a dozen states. This would not force landlords to accept rents lower than what they charge, as previous speakers have suggested. Individuals will still have to comply with all the provisions of their lease, just like any other family would. We know from sociological research that we cannot operate based on the honor system regarding discrimination protections. We must make these standards official policy in Hillsborough County. Please protect the most vulnerable citizens of our county from this discriminatory barrier by supporting the Renters' Bill of Rights fully as presented here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And does that
And Madam Chair, that is all of the callers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. And with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we can start with board discussion. And I see that Commissioner Overman has her hand raised. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the callers that called in. I truly appreciate bringing this forward for consideration by the board. As this county continues to grow, we have to ensure that citizens are not left out of the rental-based market solely on discrimination practices. After discussion with community stakeholders, I'll be making three minor edits to the ordinance. As we hold up a mirror to consider our policies toward addressing possible bias that results in inequities, it's important to acknowledge the perceptions of bias between renters and homeownership. So I'll make a recommendation to address that language within the ordinance shortly. Written notice of this ordinance is key to informing and educating tenants and landlords, and I'm happy to see that included. I look forward to learning about the robust communications plan that we can discuss during the next upcoming related item B1. What concerns me is, is what's lost in the translation in this, in this issue. I've noticed, and we've heard, concerns about mandating villa contracting with the government, which is not what this is doing at all. This is addressing the issues associated with affordable housing options and discrimination in our practices. As Ms. Takamori explained, this ordinance does not require mandatory participation in the housing voucher program, nor does it prohibit landlords from setting reasonable tenant selection criteria, including financial and credit qualifications, which should be applied equally to all tenants. This ordinance is much more about protecting not only This ordinance is much more about protecting not only those with housing vouchers, it's also about protecting veterans who qualify for Veterans Affairs supportive housing. It's about protecting those that are struggling during the pandemic and are receiving rental assistance. It's about seniors living on fixed income. It's about disabled residents living on the proceeds from a qualified disability trust, and the list goes on. It is critically important that we look at this opportunity to reinforce who we are and who we stand for in our community. Therefore, I move approval of the ordinance with the following modifications. One, change the Renters' Bill of Rights to Tenants' Bill of Rights. Change the reference from "in" all the text from renters to tenants. And that way, we address truly what the relationship is, without bias associated with the language. Two, modify Section 3 of the draft ordinance, beginning at line 103, so that the notice of rights must be given to tenants at the time of application rather than occupancy. In the instances where there's no application required, the notice can be given prior to occupancy of the rental unit. Also, remove or delete the requirement that the notice of rights be provided to existing reference tenants, and require instead that the existing tenants be provided the notice of rights at lease renewal. And that way, we address some of the concerns of those that have many tenants in the distribution process of the information. Three, provide that violations of the late fee section of the ordinance, like violations of other sections of the ordinance, do not incur penalties for conduct occurring prior to July 1 of 2021, and that there are no private causes of action for violating this section of the ordinance. And with that, I will ask for the Board's approval.
Second. And we have a second by Commissioners Smith and Myers. And motion by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Got a little confused about how to unmute. Okay. And thanks to all the public who have spoken and emailed and shared information and various perspectives and experiences with this issue, and shared this information and perspectives on social media. We have had really good public discussion of this issue. And thank you to our county attorney, Ms. Takamori, for explaining some of the misconceptions of this proposal, as were highlighted by Commissioner Overman. We have a crisis of affordable housing in our community. Everybody knows this, and everybody wants the government to fix the crisis. The county steps up with our $10 million a year program to build more affordable housing, but that's a drop in the bucket. The federal government steps up with a program of vouchers to help people pay rent, and that is available to 10,000 families in our community. But if nobody accepts those vouchers, they're useless. Government can't fix everything. We all have to do our part. We have to step up as a community, pull together, and do some things that take some work and make some changes. Allowing landlords to reject everyone paying rent with vouchers is like allowing grocery stores to reject everyone paying for food with food stamps. And it is allowing our community to say, "We don't serve a certain class of people." As was noted in the public comment, two-thirds of the people looking for housing that will accept housing choice vouchers are black. So whether it is intentional or not, this presents yet another barrier that families of color may face when looking for housing. It's a problem we need to address. We need to pull together and address. I understand that there are problems in the government assistance system of red tape, so it seems easier to landlords to simply refuse to work with people who are in these programs. But in order for our community to solve the problems of affordable housing and discrimination, we need to pull together. Ordinances prohibiting discrimination based on lawful income, including vouchers, have been adopted in other counties in Florida and in several states, and it's time we join them. So I'm pleased and proud to support this step forward in our community. And thank you, finally, to Commissioner Overman for bringing this forward. It's an excellent initiative.
Thank you. And I see no other hands raised. So at this time, I'm just going to, as well, thank Commissioner Overman for bringing this forward. I think it's a really important issue, which I was unaware of, quite frankly. And I just, you know, I did what I do usually, which is I go on and start doing research and learning about it, and I was rather stunned, actually, by the stories that I read around the country. I'll tell you that it's interesting, but Time Magazine has focused on this as an issue over time and written several articles about families in tough shape with a lot of facts. And in fact, they titled it, the article, "On Section 8: A Mask for Racial Discrimination: How Housing Voucher Programs Can Hurt." And amazingly, in some communities, some 80% of landlords reject, they just outright won't even speak to anyone, and can do that, which surprised me. I just didn't know that that was possible. Just refuse to talk to anyone who is receiving Section 8 assistance for their rent, and that's some 70% of their rent that is guaranteed. There are, as we've heard, some issues with the program, some, you know, problems that some, not, it isn't very fluid sometimes, and I know that that is a problem. But again, we have a serious problem, as Commissioner Smith so well put in addressing this. As you said, Commissioner Smith, two-thirds of, about two-thirds of those in this community are black. Across the nation, 48% of housing choice voucher recipients are black, 18% Hispanic. And as we've noted, too, those with disabilities, veterans. And it's just, I think it's time that we do something to make this not be a barrier. I read the painful stories of people that, through no fault of their own, maybe their landlord sold their building, maybe some other issues came up, and they have only 60 days, I think, to use their voucher, and they went to 40 different landlords without opportunity to rent. It's a really, can be a huge barrier in what we think is a benefit. So with that, I will definitely be supporting this, and I want to thank those who came forward, both the, those representing landlords and the tenants that came forward and spoke. That was, that was good to hear. And all the online comments, all the email and the comments from Facebook that we heard that educated us. But this is a, again, I thank you, Commissioner Overman, and I'll be supporting this measure. And I do not see any other comments. And so with that, if we can do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried five, five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
And thank you. And the corresponding item, item B1, is the resolution that is associated with this, and so Nancy Takamori will go through that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Nancy Takamori County Attorney's Office. This item is a board resolution adopting a notice of rights that landlords are required to write to tenants per the ordinance that you just approved. And according to your direction in adopting the last ordinance, we will be revising the resolution and the notice so that it refers consistently to tenants and not renters. I'd like to point out that the notice that is attached, you'd be approving for content only, that Communications has already been hard at work making it more easy to read and visually appealing, and it will also be available in Spanish and on the county's website by the effective date of the ordinance, which is March 15. I'm available for questions, should you have any.
Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I don't really have a series of questions for Ms. Takamori, and thank you very much for making the changes as recommended in the last, the last item. I do think it is important for us to recognize that we're going to have to work with our tenants and our landlords to help them understand the process. Majority of the pushback on the past issue has to do with the administrative process that's dictated by the government to some degree. But if we can work, if we can work with our federal legislators, with HUD program, along with our Housing Authority, to improve the administrative process where possible, that will address many of the issues. But this is important, that we really talk about what this is about. And so I'd like to see if Ms. Lopez might be available to give us an overview of the communication plan that you and your staff will look to implement so both landlords and tenants are aware of the elements of this action, and what it does and what it doesn't do. Ms. Lopez, are you available? Is she available?
Ms. Lopez? Ms. Wise?
I am not seeing her.
I cannot see her on the line.
Okay. Well, just, I want to assure you, we're putting together a great communication plan. And in speaking with her, I just thought it might be helpful for the Board to recognize that that effort is really to make sure that we level the playing field by helping people understand what this means and how it's a best tool for best practices in the rental market. So with that, I'll move to adopt the resolution approving the proposed notice of rights to be distributed by landlords and persons renting residential property as set forth in the Tenant Bill of Rights, source of income anti-discrimination and late-fee notice ordinance.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And seeing no further comments, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Hagan? Hagan?
To make sure Hagan's muted, but I'll...
Overman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. I believe we have Congresswoman Castor on the line for her special appearance, and we appreciate her waiting with us and being flexible with us. And thank you, Congresswoman Castor, for coming to the County Commission and welcome. We're ready to hear your words. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Chairwoman Kemp and Commissioners, and to the county administrator and county attorney, and everyone there at the Hillsborough County Government. I'm here to give everyone with Hillsborough County a long overdue thank you for everything that you've done to help serve our neighbors all across Hillsborough County during the public health crisis. So I want to thank you for what you've done, but also provide an outlook on what we can expect from the next round of emergency aid under the American Rescue Plan. And it's hard to believe that it's been one year since the public health crisis took hold, and it's been very difficult for so many of our neighbors and small businesses. But working together, we've been able to keep many families afloat and keep many small businesses open and workers attached to the small businesses, and protect the community health. And a shout out to Dr. Holt and all of you for following the advice of public health experts when it comes to the important public health protocols, and we're going to need to keep those in place. I hear from a lot of the scientists and public health experts until we crush COVID-19, and that's what we intend to do. But I wanted to reflect upon the, what you have done with the $257 million that was provided in a bipartisan way under the CARES Act last year. You all made it transparent. You ensured that it got, it really arrived into the pocketbooks of neighbors who were in crisis mode for util, to pay their utilities, to pay their rent, cover their housing, cover their mortgage, really just the fundamental sustenance of being able to put food on the tables. Your support of Feeding Tampa Bay and Metropolitan Ministries was absolutely vital to make sure that families, that should take a new look, and that includes, in our very diverse community, a lot of green card holders and Visa holders who weren't allowed a crack at the PPP. So if you know a small business owner that is still struggling, and they need a little extra help to get through the next few months, then let's connect them to the Small Business Development Center at USF or the Center for Women that really can help.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. And I just want to quickly say thank you very much to Representative Castor for coming here today and sharing this good news with us, and I just really appreciate your working so closely from Washington to Hillsborough County with our community, with your deep and detailed understanding of this community's specific needs. It is, it is just so great to have this working relationship with your history and understanding and caring of our needs. I know that our administration will be working closely through this, the details that you laid out, the highlights of these CARES dollars. The rental assistance will be especially appreciated, and the CARES dollars for Hartz contract employees couldn't come at a more critical time. And so, thank you very much. We'll be, you know, looking, poring over the details of this, but very much appreciate your coming here and giving us an understanding of what's next for us in that, in that package. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Smith. And I have to say that I learned so much, as you all can appreciate, and it has given me an insight into how important these dollars are when they flow back home and how they're used.
Thank you. And, you know, just to also emphasize, Congresswoman Castor, I'd like to do some recognition of Feeding Tampa Bay. They really are feeding Tampa Bay now. It's just thousands of cars and just programs, you know, all week long in all different communities. It's a pretty amazing effort that they've undertaken, and extraordinarily important it's been during COVID. And I know you recognize Tom and Mann's. I know that they would like nothing more than to be out of business, but it's, they have done an extraordinary job throughout the region, as well as here, and such an important job, and they're practically like a county department in some ways. It feels that way. So I'd just like to recognize or emphasize as well what you did in recognizing them.
You're outstanding.
And I see no other comments or questions at this time, but we thank you for coming to the Hillsborough County Commission and updating us and the public and everyone on the work that, that the resources that are coming our way, and we appreciate the work that's been done on our behalf by you Congresswoman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Kemp, and to-
Thank you, Chairwoman Kemp, and to all of the Commissioners, and especially to the uniquely talented and thoughtful county administration, everyone with Hillsborough County Government. Thank you again for what you've done in serving our neighbors. And let's get going to make sure that no one falls through the cracks in the coming months.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We do very much appreciate those comments. We work very closely with the Congresswoman's staff, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Wise, we'll go to the next, our very full agenda, the next item on our very full agenda.
Yes, and you all, if you could let me know if we need to take a quick break at any time, because I do know that...
Maybe that would be... I know we discussed doing that because of this format. Maybe we could take, at this point, a five-minute recess.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Are we going to need a lunch break today?
It depends, I guess, on how long, you know, things go.
And welcome back to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners after a short recess. We will continue with... We have a lot of items to go here. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next public hearing is Item D2. This is the first public hearing for the Wyomama Village Residential 2 area, and this is regarding the extension of the moratorium. Joanna Lundgren with the County Attorney's Office will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm introducing for consideration the first public hearing for the ordinance providing for an extension of the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications within the Wyomama Village Residential 2, WVR2, future land use category until December 31st of 2021. The proposed extension of the moratorium is intended to provide additional time to engage the public regarding the comprehensive plan and land development code amendments for the Wyomama Village Residential 2 planning area in line of the continued challenges to stakeholder participation that have been presented by the COVID-19 pandemic. This is the first of two public hearings on the proposed ordinance, and no vote is required today. A second public hearing for consideration of adoption of the ordinance will be scheduled for the Board's regular meeting on April 7th, 2021.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have several speakers, not a lot, but we will begin to recognize those. Christina Bosworth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Christina Bosworth. I am a resident of Wyomama and on the Board of Directors of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation. I support the extension of the moratorium on accepting and processing new rezoning requests for WVR2. The global pandemic struck right after our first community workshops last March, making it almost impossible to involve the community in the process of updating the Wyomama Village Plan and its associated land use rules. Planning Commission staff did an excellent job trying to get involvement, but this unprecedented global event made it impossible to get residents sufficiently involved. There may be those that tell you the moratorium should be separate from this process, but I disagree. The current plan has an employment requirement that must be met before new rezoning requests from rural to planned developments are approved. There are no jobs left in the bank to fulfill this requirement. So if the moratorium is listed and rezoning applications are accepted prior to the update, they should all be rejected for that reason. Why waste county resources, meaning our taxpayer dollars, on this fruitless processing? Please extend the moratorium to give us time to put our revised plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Garlaza?
Buenos dias, Commissionados. Mi nombre es Carmen Garlaza. Yo he sido residente de Wyomama por más de cuarenta años. Yo apoyo la extensión de la moratoria de aceptación y proceso de nuevos solicitudes de reaccionificados para el plan de Wyomama. La pandemia ha hecho difícil la participación de la comunidad en el proceso de planificación. Este evento global hizo imposible involucrar suficientemente a los residentes. Por favor, extiendan la moratoria para darnos tiempo para poner en marcha nuestro plan revisado. Gracias.
Holly Jamison?
Hi, thank you. My name is Holly Jamison. As a resident of Wyomama, a board member of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation, and also a stakeholder of Wyomama Now, I request that you pass the moratorium extension for these reasons. Number one, after 13 years of inaction, citizens of Wyomama came together to update the ambitious Wyomama Village Plan, and we have worked diligently for over a year to create a plan that would revitalize downtown Wyomama, provide desperately needed infrastructure improvements, and provide our residents with basic amenities such as parks. We had hoped to have completed that plan by now, but obviously because of COVID, that has not been possible. What does that have to do with extending the moratorium on new building permits? As you know, the plan includes changes to WVR2 land use zoning that will affect development and growth in Wyomama. The plan must be completed and passed to include those changes and update for the benefit of the community. Both the Planning Commission and this body of county commissioners have stated that more time is needed to both iron out details and also to get information to the community. The plan is complex. Can you explain FLU, WVR2, DU, DARS to Wyomama residents and how it will improve their lives? We have an amazing, probably once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make Wyomama a wonderful place to live, work, and play. 270 days extension is nothing compared to the positive long-term effects the Wyomama Village Plan will have. Please extend the moratorium. I thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Gomez?
Madam Chair, Pamela has not called in and identified.
Thank you. Margaret Clarrett?
Margaret also has not called in and identified.
And Elizabeth Gutierrez?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Elizabeth Gutierrez, and I, on behalf of Enterprise in Latinas, a nonprofit organization that works together with many other organizations, residents, and community leaders, have been working to improve the quality of life and health and prosperity of residents of Wyomama. Respectfully, we as an organization submit and request your support for the extension of the WVR2 moratorium that you are considering today. We believe that it is important for our planning process, which, as some have already discussed, is an important tool for us to be able to consider how to revitalize the community so that everyone can benefit. And we believe that the extension of the moratorium to be consistent with the planning process is important. We've been concerned, as many have shared in the past, that the speed and scale of housing development in Wyomama supersede the infrastructure capacity needed to meet the demands of the housing, of the new housing as well as the population. We've also been concerned that the existing, that the updated plan, as many also have shared, doesn't necessarily effectively provide and propose solutions for the needs for jobs, for affordable housing, and the redevelopment of the downtown. We understand that there are challenges that this moratorium extension presents to the development community, but we consider the long-term impact of the community and its lack of infrastructure a greater threat. COVID-19 has impeded the community's ability to effectively engage in the planning process led by the Planning Commission, and we believe that more time is needed to ensure that all voices are heard. Already, we've met with the Planning Commission staff to plan and design community planning activities in the next couple of months that will allow the professional planning team and all the stakeholders to properly consider the goals, the strategies, and the regulatory framework established in this plan. By extending the moratorium, you allow the community the time required to complete the planning process so that we can bring back to you and the Planning Commission Board a new updated neighborhood plan that effectively addresses the community's concerns and priorities. I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. I see no other anyone else signed up to speak at public hearing. Is there anyone, Mr. Brewer?
That is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we don't need to take any vote on this at this time, this public hearing, without a vote. Ms. Wise? Excuse me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thanks. I just want to thank the citizens who are, who came and spoke today about this moratorium and... and to encourage you all to remain engaged. I know it's a difficult process. I've been through this myself with various community planning and county planning efforts, and I know it can be intimidating. I know it can be difficult and controversial, but the end result will be worth it if you all persevere and remain engaged and keep your eye on the vision that you have for your community so that we can understand what works best for Wyomama and help us to bring that to fruition, working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And seeing no further discussion, I'll move to Ms. Wise for the next item. Thank you. The next is also a public hearing, item D3, and this is regarding the extending the moratorium as well for the Residential Plan Two, RP2, area. And Joanna Lundgren will present this item as well.
Thank you. I will now introduce the first public hearing for consideration of an ordinance providing for extension of the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications within a portion of the Residential Plan Two, RP2, future land use category, to extend the moratorium until December 31st, 2021. The proposed extension of the moratorium is intended to provide additional time to engage the public regarding the comprehensive plan and land development code amendments for the RP2 planning area in line of the continued challenges to stakeholder participation that have been presented by the COVID-19 pandemic. This is the first of two public hearings on the proposed ordinance, and no vote is required today. A second public hearing for consideration of adoption of the ordinance will be scheduled for the Board's regular meeting on April 7th, 2021.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. I see no one signed up for this. Mr. Brewer, is there anyone there that is wishing to comment on D3?
You are correct, there is no one signed up.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing. And is there any board discussion on this at this time? And we don't have to have a vote again till the final public hearing. So with that, I'll move to Ms. Wise. Thank you. The next item, item D4, is to conduct also the first of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement. Adam Gormley will take us through this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Development Services. Item D4 is the first of two public hearings to consider a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Engineering Analysis Group, LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Doug Creek Townhomes Project that consists of 100 single-family attached units, residential units. The agreement calls for a payment in the amount of $139,435 to fund five middle school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. The school student stations are supposed to be, contributions proposed to go to the PK through eight school UU in water set development. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on April 7th, 2021. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We do have a couple of speakers signed up here. Mr. Brickelmeier. Clayton Brickelmeier.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Clayton Brickelmeier representing the applicant. I'm simply available for questions if you have any. I believe Mr. Carter is also.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Carter, but you just spoke to that, so I'm assuming he doesn't want to speak. And is there anyone else signed up to speak to this? Mr. Brewer?
Madam Chair, that is everyone that's signed up today.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to any board discussion of this item. Seeing no board discussion, we don't need a vote, no final action required at this time, and so we will move on to the next item. Ms. Wise. The next item is item E2, which is the emergency management operations related to COVID-19, and staff will give a very brief report on this. First over to Mr. Dudley.
Tim Dudley, Officer of Emergency Management Director. I will provide a brief update on current operations. Hillsborough County is operating federal, state, county sites for vaccine distribution. Federal supported site at Tampa, Greyhound Track, open for business today, focused on the vulnerable population. This is a walk-up site, not a drive-through. They will administer 2,000 shots per day, seven days per week, and they will also have two mobile teams that will deploy from that hub. This week, they will be operating, starting today, at Larry Sanders Sports Complex, and then the following week, HCC Brandon Campus, they will be administering vaccines then. The state-supported vaccine site at University Mall Parking Garage has relocated to Raymond James Stadium, Lot 14. State-run vaccinations at Raymond James will continue seven days per week, and appointments for vaccines are required. The county will be operating two vaccine sites, open effective today. At Radish Sports Complex will be administered targeted vaccinations to healthcare workers as well as age 50-plus, law enforcement firefighters, and K through 12 school employees in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 2147. And at our Vance Vogel Sports Complex, we will administer vaccines to general population residents, 65-plus. Our mobile vaccination initiative is underway for the homebound to include state missions for homebound veterans and local missions for homebound special needs patients who are medically unable to make it to the fixed sites. Targeted vaccine areas continue to be scheduled for first and second dose missions. Over 41 sites have been visited so far, administering over 16,700 first doses and 12,100 doses with our targeted VVA mission. Testing, the existing state-supported COVID-19 testing site at Raymond James Stadium has relocated to University Mall Parking Garage. It is not inside of the mall, but it is actually at the parking garage where vaccines were administered previously. Testing at University Mall will be Tuesday through Saturday, 8 to 4 p.m. Test demand continues to trend downward. Last week, Hillsborough County averaged 961 daily test collections, down 2.6% from previous We have no significant logistic issues at this time, and also, the county has zero guests in quarantine and isolation, so that's good news. This concludes my updates. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any further presentations at this time, Ms. Wise? We have Dr. Holt would be giving his brief presentation as well. Dr. Holt?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Dr. Holt, Florida Department of Health. I'll provide a brief overview of the EpiTrends and some comments on our county-wide vaccination efforts. Then Mr. Ragnar will do his dashboard review. Next slide, please. As you can see, that based on the EpiData, our dissent has really stalled over the last three weeks. Average number of cases has remained around 350, with our average positivity rate around 7%. There was a follow-up question the last time about the Super Bowl impact. A report is being released today. The conclusion was that there was a slight increase in transmission rate observed. This was likely due to the unofficial Super Bowl gatherings, homes, restaurants, and bars, not classified as a super-spreader event. Feel very confident in this, that because of the enhanced surveillance that was done beyond our usual efforts, an alert was sent out nationwide to ask us, or asking them to report any cases that possibly associated. We focused on a period, the start of the Super Bowl period, January 29th, through the victory celebration, February 10th, and 14 days after. 53 Florida cases and four non-Florida residents reported having attended some of these activities, but there were no linked cases associated with that. Our hospitals decreased the number of patients, very notable. Occupancy is flat as it has been. Next slide, please. This is a vaccination table. It looks at data as of February 28th. The number of Hillsborough County residents vaccinated as of then was 145,634. We're just over 151,000 through yesterday. This table also breaks it down by age and the percentage of those ages, and you can see that in the 65 and over population, we're just under 100,000 that have received at least one dose. I am encouraged, but I know we can do better. The percent of this totals is around 46% of our population of 65 and older, and that's below our state average of 50% and below targets of 60. So digging a little deeper, we found that we're, number of doses being administered and recorded into our Florida shot system has sort of plateaued and also been flat. And while some of this likely is due to some challenges of reporting at the state-run site, in cooperation with Ms. Wise and the leadership team, we're launching a six-week surge plan. We're going to get 30,000 doses over the first three weeks, followed by 30,000 doses in the subsequent three weeks. As Mr. Dudley mentioned, we'll accomplish this by standing up the two of the county-run sites beginning this week. We've also entered into a partnership with the James J. Haley VA, and they will vaccinate, they will use the vaccination provided from the state to vaccinate spouses, caregivers of eligible veterans, non-enrolled veterans, spouses, family members of the VA staff, all of those that they cannot use the VA-provided vaccine for. With this increased access, my hope is that we can get closer to that goal of 60% of our 65 and older. The next group that's part of the executive order that has already been, receiving a lot of calls and discussions, is those that are over, under 65 and have medical conditions. The executive order, I don't really interpret it, but as written, any physician licensed in Florida may now deem those persons who are extremely vulnerable, something previously only hospital providers could do. Then those persons can then be vaccinated by licensed physicians, advanced practitioners, RNs, and pharmacists. So as written, these persons at this time cannot be vaccinated at Raymond James, at Radish, or Vance Vogel, because at this time they don't have the staff listed in the executive order to administer vaccines. With that, I'll stop and turn it over to Mr. Wagner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Wagner, Business Analyst, Healthcare Services Department. I will present the publicly available dashboard for Hillsborough County. To date, there's been 111,000, nearly 112,000 known confirmed cases of citizens in Hillsborough County, with attributed 1,522 fatalities, and the vaccination records, as indicated by Dr. Holt, are nearly 150,000 receiving the first dose or completing the series of two currently. As indicated by Dr. Holt, on our cases have flatlined around 350 per day on a seven-day average, down 2%, and on a 14-day average, down a little less than 8%. So we are seeing a flattening of the current caseload of positivity. Our testing, as indicated by Tim Dudley, has decreased. These are the tests reported to the FDOH on a 14-day average. It's under 31,000 tests that were conducted, and the positivity rate, again, is around 8%. As indicated by Dr. Holt, the hospital occupancy and capacity is still holding strong. Right now, overall capacity or occupancy is nearly 81%, means 19% available on the total hospital occupancy, and on the ICU, nearly 67% occupancy. And with that, I'll stop there for today. Thank you.
And does that complete our presentation? Yes, but those presentations are now on to the county attorneys up. Well, first, Commissioner Overman, you have your hand up. I'm sorry, I didn't see it at first, but I don't know if it's in regards to the presentation?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll keep it really brief, because I know we're trying to catch up a little bit in time. For Mr. Dudley, or possibly Dr. Holt, you know, the second dose vaccination process is underway. There's lots of confusion by the public. There's lots of locations that can get tested. Those are all great things, right? There's a lot of opportunity for people to get vaccinated over the age of 65, and now for those that are most vulnerable. Our offices are getting significant calls to try and solve the problems of the confusion, and also to address how to get a second vaccine in the event that they haven't been contacted. So I'm going to ask, is the joint communications group still in place, and is there a way that we can develop a robust communications plan with all of our partners in this effort and get that information out on a daily basis? Because like I said, there's a lot of interest by the public, there's a lot of interest by our seniors, and there's a lot of information coming out, and a lot of changes that have just occurred. So anytime we have change, we add to the confusion process, and communication can be really helpful in that assistance. Is there a joint communications group, and what is our?
I believe Ms. Wise would like to respond to that. Thank you. Yes, the Joint Information Center is still in process, and they meet very often. We did update our website this weekend, and we update it as we do get additional information. We don't always get as much information as we would like from some of our parties and our partners, but we are all working closely together. We are going to send something out to all of your offices if you are still getting questions about that second dose. There was some issues over at University Mall with the second dose. They have changed their procedure since then so that people are getting their appointments now, but I think there still are some people that were from several weeks ago that do not have that information. So we will send a refresh of some of that information of how those individuals can get processed, and we can get those appointments, working with them as soon as possible.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That answers my questions.
I did see someone who their shot with second vaccine was still two weeks away, and they got a text saying that they had been moved, so that gave me some reassurances. Thank you. And with that, we'll recognize the county attorney, Christine Beck.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Beck, County Attorney, and I will be very brief. On Friday, February 26th, I just wanted to note that the state did extend the state of emergency for an additional 60 days. And also, on March 1st, Order 2147 was issued by the Governor's Office that expanded the those eligible to be vaccinated. Dr. Holt has covered that, so I won't cover that again. So the last item on the agenda then is the usual extension of the local state of emergency for an additional seven days in accordance with Florida statutes. I only want to note that there is a Scrivener's error in the order in your backup that has the date of March 3rd, and that has been corrected to March 4th. It was just a Scrivener's error, but with that, it would be appropriate to take a vote on that order.
Move of approval.
We have a motion to move approval by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And seeing no discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is item E3, which is a special appearance by outside counsel Alan Zimmet from Bryant Miller Olive to provide an update on the transportation surtax Florida Supreme from Bryant Miller Olive to provide an update on the transportation surtax Florida Supreme Court ruling, and Ms. Beck will take us through this item.
Yes, hello again, Commissioners. In just a moment, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zimmett to discuss the surtax litigation, but I wanted to give you just a brief outline of what else we would be covering. Very briefly, I'd like Rob Brazel to give a brief update on the status of another piece of litigation, just to inform the board of that status. It's the Emerson class action lawsuit, and then I just have a couple of brief comments to make in terms of an update following that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zimmett.
Thank you, Christine. So as everybody knows, the Supreme Court issued their opinion finding that the Citizens' Initiative could not limit the authority given to the Board of County Commissioners by state statute to determine how to allocate the tax dollars and ultimately how the tax dollars should be spent. Supreme Court said only the Board of County Commissioners can make those decisions. So the actual action of the Supreme Court was that it reversed the bond validation judgment and the declaratory judgment that was entered by Judge Barbis. The decision of the Supreme Court is not final until the time expires for the filing of a motion for rehearing. Under the court rules, the parties have 15 days to file a motion for rehearing, so that time will expire on March 12th. If no motion for rehearing is filed by any of the parties, the court will issue what's called a mandate shortly after March 12th, and that will then make the decision final. The court did not erect the circuit court for the Barbis to take any further action or nor is any further proceedings required in the trial court, so when the mandate is issued, the case will be filed, will be final. If someone does file a motion for rehearing, then the mandate will be held back until the court decides the motion for rehearing. Having reviewed the opinion, and we've discussed this with the County Attorney's Office, we don't see any basis for filing a motion for rehearing. So again, if none is filed, we would expect a mandate to be issued shortly after March 12th, and that litigation will be finalized.
And thank you, Mr. Zimmett. And we will move now at this point to?
Yes, at this time, if Rob Brazel, Chief Assistant County Attorney, could give a brief summary of the other piece of litigation that's related.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Rob Brazel from the County Attorney's Office. As Christine mentioned, there is another piece of litigation that is related to the surtax litigation. It's styled as Emerson, because that's the name of the initial plaintiff in the case. It purports to be a class action, seeking essentially to do the same thing that Commissioner White sought in his lawsuit, but with the added piece of asking the court to order a refund of the collective proceeds. At this point, the action continues to be stayed. It was abated by the judge pending the resolution of the main lawsuit on the surtax that was decided by the Supreme Court. That stay and abatement could now be lifted. We anticipate having a hearing before the court at the end of the month, which right now is likely to be a case management conference, but we are anxious to have the court schedule and consider our motion to dismiss. But at that point, at this point, I should say, there's been no further activity in that case until the court has our case management conference later in the month.
Thank you, Rob. And with the chair's permission, if I can just make a few additional comments?
Of course.
So following the receipt of the long-awaited Supreme Court ruling, I just wanted to update the board to let you know that we did have a meeting with all of the stakeholder government lawyers to, to make sure that we were communicating and that there was general agreement about next steps. And in that meeting, we felt that the next steps are going to have to include some process to provide for a refund for those who would want to pursue that. And following those meetings and discussions, we then also reached out to the Department of Revenue and discussed what their role may be in this, because normally the Department of Revenue would be involved in such a process, but in speaking with their general counsel, we learned that really this is a very unprecedented situation even for, for the Department of Revenue, and they seem to be indicating that a judicial process would be most appropriate for providing that refund process. The other point is that we learned from speaking to representatives of the department that when the mandate is issued, that would likely trigger their next step of notifying dealers to stop collecting the tax once the case is final. The clerk's office has already stopped distributing the tax. So with that, you know, we will continue to keep each of you apprised of any developments, but that is the update I wanted to provide you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other, oh, I'm sorry, there are a few hands raised here, and Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's make a couple of comments. I'll be brief. I've long pushed for additional monies for resurfacing and sidewalk improvements. Just so everyone knows, for resurfacing, we have probably, or we do have over 7,200 total lane miles of unfunded need, repairs, 3,200 total miles of existing sidewalk needs, plus another 136 new sidewalk projects. The unfunded need is in excess of $400 million. To put it into perspective, a sidewalk repair that was made in my district last week has been on the books for 10 years. So we could definitely use the revenue that was collected for neighborhood resurfacing and sidewalk improvements, and candidly, I was prepared to vigorously fight for my district's fair share. However, the court has ruled, it is essentially, the money is essentially fruit from a poisonous tree, and we should not delay any longer. We need to return the money to our citizens as quickly as possible. Many of our folks are hurting right now and can certainly use it. So I don't, I'm not, I'm unclear with the will of the board, but I'm going to put a motion on the floor, see if it goes anywhere, for our staff to work with the Department of Revenue and the clerk of the court to create the process to refund the monies as quickly as practical. Enough of my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan and a second by Commissioner White, and I see Commissioner Overman has her, she had her hand raised before this.
Thank you, and it somewhat relates to the motion, so I'll ask the question. And I too, unfortunately, the circumstances has been difficult. It is obviously incumbent on this board to show leadership in addressing the issues associated with transportation in our community, and I anticipate that we'll have that discussion. With that being said, I don't know, I'm curious, if maybe Mr. Brazel can answer this question. You know, in class action suits, I don't typically understand the terms of them, but typically, there's, there's some percentage that actually goes back to whoever the participants are, and then there's a certain percentage that is retained by the law firms that process the refunds. Is there a sort of a guideline that the court uses in class action suits? And the reason I ask is if we can figure out a way to address, working with, as Commissioner Hagan has recommended, you know, the Department of Revenue and our clerk, and come up with a reasonable solution for being able to address the taxpayers that would like a refund, as the alternative, what is it, how does it work with class action suits in terms of net back to whoever the aggrieved person is?
Well, Commissioner, I don't know that there's a right line guideline for how the money gets divided up. In terms of attorney's fees, sometimes they get a percentage of the total amount that's in controversy, sometimes they may request an hourly billing type reimbursement. But yes, when there are attorneys involved in a class action, they are going to get paid in some manner through, through some either formula or percentage that may be agreed upon and that the court is willing to award, and then the remainder, just like in any case, you know, would end up back with the plaintiff, the client, in this case, the citizens who seek a refund.
And the reason I ask that question is because we've collected a significant number, amount of taxes since this time period, and, you know, 1% of that is a ton of money. So, yeah, I think it's important for all of us to really look for the best way that we can actually serve our citizens' goals and needs. And if in fact, as Commissioner Hagan recommended, or is suggesting this is, you know, fruit from a poisonous tree, we need to put it back if possible and do it in the, in the most efficient fashion without losing that to something other than the purpose of the tax, and I think that's the most important part. So thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you. I don't see any other, let's see, Commissioner Smith, your hand is raised.
Thank you. I don't really understand the, the motion. I thought that our attorney was just saying that the courts are still to determine how to, that there, it's, we're kind of guessing that there will be some reimbursement, but that will be settled by the court still, and we have some legal procedures to go through. So I think it's a little premature if, if nothing else to determine that we'll, we will start giving it back, and in any case, you know, there, there certainly are voters in our county who expected this money to go to transportation needs, so I'm not sure that, well, I'm not, maybe I need the motion restated, but first I'd like to ask our county attorney how this fits in with the legal position we're in right now.
Yes, Commissioner Smith, we collectively, the parties and the cities and Hart and clerk's office and the lawyers for those entities believe that working through the courts is the most efficient and expeditious way to get finality and to get a refund process that is, you know, blessed by our judicial system. And so we don't, there are some unknowns there as to which court and the timing, so as long as the maker of the motion kind of understands that we are limited by, you know, future judicial decisions, but we do intend to work to provide a refund process.
Thank you. And if the maker of the motion would just restate it, I'm really not understanding, I don't feel like we're in a position to take that action today, but if you'd restate, maybe I'd better understand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before, I have my hand raised, before Commissioner Hagan restates the motion as the one that seconded the motion, I'd like to just put, put my thoughts on the floor as to how I interpreted it, and then have Commissioner Hagan agree or disagree as to whether or not that's what he intended.
Well, let's have Commissioner Hagan do it. I actually had another point, because I would have asked for a point of clarification from our attorney if Commissioner Smith, so I just have one question to do, and then, and then we'll, we'll recognize you.
Okay.
And so if you could just restate the motion, Commissioner Hagan?
Okay, thank you. I understand there may be limitations based on the judicial system, but I also understand that our citizens have been paying into this for two years. We waited to spend the money. We don't need to wait any longer than we have to, to refund the money. We know that the end result. Now, I've also been told from Bonnie and Christine that we're going to have to work with the Department of Revenue, we're going to have to work with the clerk's office. This is, we're charting new territory here, and there has to be a process. So the motion was simply to work with Department of Revenue, to work with the clerk's office. If we need to involve or wait for further judicial direction, that's fine, but we shouldn't sit back and just wait another year or two for the court system to work out how people keep paying the money. We need to show leadership here, that we understand the ruling, we're not fighting the ruling, but hey, I'm the one that wants to spend as much as anyone in my district, believe me. But it is fruit from a poisonous tree, we need to have a process, so let's start that process now and work with the clerk's office, work with Department of Revenue, and any other body that needs to be, to come up with the process that we can return the money as quickly as practical.
And, and with that, I just would like the county attorney to clarify, because as I understand what he, what Commissioner Hagan has made in his motion, it sounds like steps we're already taking or going to take anyway, that that would, I don't see how his motion would differ than how we were proceeding at this time. That's just, that's just where I'm not, I'm uncertain.
Yeah, I don't think there's a major difference in how we're proceeding, but we certainly have no objection to the board expressing their desire that that's how we proceed. We definitely have to work with the Department of Revenue and the clerk and the courts, and we understand that it should be done expeditiously as possible.
Okay, so it's just, it's just kind of, for me, confirming what we're, we're doing, but.
My last comment, it just shows, nothing else, it shows our citizens that we understand the stakes here, we're not fighting it, and we're, we're going to work in process to refund the money. If nothing else, it's showing our citizens that we've all received the emails, that we understand and we're doing everything that we can.
Okay, and with that, I'll recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you. I, I am understanding Commissioner Hagan's motion, if it passes, to mean that as our lawyers go to court on our behalf, that the county commission's officially stated position would be that we support that money being refunded to the people that have, that have paid what we now know to be an unlawful levy of dollars. So I'd like to hear if, if that's, you know, part of the spirit of Commissioner Hagan's motion, because that's, that's why I seconded it. That's what I had understood.
Luckily, yes. It is.
And do we have any other comments here?
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Myers.
Just like to ask the county attorney, we will be receiving reports at board meetings of your meeting with the Department of Revenue and the clerks, giving us an update at every meeting of the funding, of the discussion of how the refund would come back. Am I correct?
Of course, we would always plan to keep the board apprised as this case continues to develop and we find a resolution and finality.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So, and for me, seeing no difference, and we definitely, I mean, it has to be part of the process to, you know, work expeditiously with a refund, so I, I'll support the motion, I'll just say. And I don't know if there's any other discussion, and seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And do we have any other, anything else we have to discuss? Ms. Beck?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item, Item F1, relating to the transportation sales surtax and working with the County Attorney's Office and the county administration.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today is a day that I live up to a campaign promise. I said if the Florida Supreme Court does not rule in Hillsborough County favor for the 1% transportation tax, that I will lead the way to bring the 1% transportation surtax referendum back to the voters in 2022. So my motion is to direct the County Attorney's Office to collaborate with the county administration to prepare the appropriate 1% transportation surtax timeline and present the timeline back to the board on April 21st. The timeline should include the public hearing dates. The timeline should include the public hearing dates, the date the supervisor of election shall receive the ballot information, the audit, county workshops, date of election, and any other related items to the 1% transportation surtax timeline. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and we have Commissioner White, is your hand up on this? Or is that from before? Yes, okay, Commissioner.
You might be surprised to hear that I'm going to support your motion, because the motion is to simply direct staff to get to work and draft some documents to be brought to this board. And, you know, I've generally supported, you know, the measures of taking first steps. That does not necessarily mean that I would be supportive of sending this out to referendum in the end, but I appreciate your leadership on this matter.
Thank you.
And I understand that you ran, you know, on that issue as a campaign promise, and I applaud you for making good on a campaign promise.
Thank you.
Because so many politicians, so many elected officials go out and promise the people of the world on the campaign trail, and they don't make good on those promises, and they don't deliver. So, I appreciate your leadership. I will be supporting the motion to move forward and instruct staff to begin to do some work, put some documents together. You know, I serve a different constituency, you know, we're both single-member district commissioners, so, you know, I don't know where I'm going to land on this in the end, but certainly, as a gesture, you know, to let you know how much I applaud your leadership, I'll vote in the affirmative on this today, to take some steps forward, get something in front of this board.
And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And yes, thank you, Commissioner Myers, for moving this forward. I think we've both been racing the gates to bring these concerns to our citizens' needs and make sure that we're addressing those appropriately. And I do appreciate the motion to bring back a timeline. I do look forward to the dialogue, I do look forward to the transparency, I do look forward to the collaboration by all of those that previously were involved in this effort, whether it be the related agencies like MPO and Hart. And I do believe that it's important to recommit, to show the leadership that the Board of County Commission is taking to bring back a cohesive, sustainable transportation plan that meets not only our citizens' needs, but the county's need to address our infrastructure. And I will support the motion to bring that back, and as long as it does also include in that timeline, just as I mentioned to staff, you know, a workshop or two that really talks about how the surtax is organized in such a way that it gets the support it needs from the citizens that want us to invest in transportation and transit in our community. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'll be brief again. I too want to commend Commissioner Myers on her leadership on bringing this forward. Clearly, this is too big of an issue for us just to keep kicking the can down the road for another couple of years. So, thank you, Commissioner Myers, for bringing this forward. I like the idea of the timelines and discussing, you know, having workshops. I just want to stress that we need to have a real transparent discussion on the county needs. On the last item, I gave you some numbers hot off the press on some of the unfunded sidewalk and resurfacing needs, and we all know that the total number, unfunded need for transportation is in several billions, depending on which list you look at. So, but we just need to have a real discussion on those needs, and I look forward to having that in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, and, I'm sorry, Commissioner White?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I always make every effort to not get into the queue a second time, you know, so as to not prolong our meetings, but I think it's worth echoing Commissioner Hagan's sentiment that as we move forward and begin to talk about the appropriations of any potential funds that might come about from a new referendum, I think that transparency and putting the county's needs out there is paramount. So, it's worth echoing those sentiments, and thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for bringing that up.
And at this moment, I don't think I see anyone else with their hands in the queue, so I would also like to thank you, Commissioner Myers. We'll get this ball rolling, and I think, you know, 57%, 57% of every commissioned district supported it with a majority, what was on the ballot prior. It was overwhelming, the amount of support that it received, and it was the, you know, we owe it to the, those citizens of Hillsborough County that were counting on moving this forward. I consider it also an act of faith in what they did to move this forward, knowing how desperate our transportation and transit needs are in Hillsborough County. So, I appreciate the timeline, because we certainly do have some considerations to be made, especially in terms of the state requiring an audit, and kind of when is the last time we can do this? And so, putting out a timeline, I think, is a good thing, and it's also a gesture for those of us, so many, that I think are greatly disappointed to see that this isn't going forward as we anticipated before. But we seem to be a county that's ready and a commission that's ready to move this forward, and so this is a good guideline. So, thank you for bringing it forward. And with that, well, since I see no other, no one else in the queue, we'll do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is G1. This is to receive a report regarding the use of phosphogypsum in road construction. Commissioner Hagan had previously requested this report. John Lyons will go through this item, and we have EPC staff available as well. You have extensive background in this, for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner John Lyons, Public Works Administrator. Back in December, the board asked us to take a look at the recent change in ruling by the United States EPA.
I'm sorry, can we get just a little more volume, please?
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. Back in December, the board asked us to look at a recent ruling by the EPA, the U.S. EPA, on the use of phosphogypsum in road construction. Phosphogypsum is a byproduct of the processing of phosphate rock to create fertilizer, and it's currently stored in stacks and regulated by the EPA and others. The environmental, the Phosphate Institute had requested the EPA back in 2019 to consider use of this product and beneficial reuse of this product in roadway construction in government roads. The EPA issued an approval with certain restrictions for use in doing this, and so what we did is we reached out to both the Florida Department of Transportation, who sets the standards for roadway construction materials, and which we have to adhere to by statute, and also to the EPC, the Hillsborough County EPC, with regard to the risk of radiological issues. The, their approval basically was very restrictive in how much of this material could be used in roadway construction, less than two, less than 3% of the material by weight if it went into asphalt, and less than 50% of it by weight if it went into roadway base construction. And there were other restrictions as well in doing this. There's a long process ahead, as I understand, particularly on the DOT side of things, in material testing and looking at this material in the future. EPC could speak to the radiological side of the questions that may come up as well. I have no other information unless you have any questions to answer.
Thank you. And do we have the EPC? Is anyone from the EPC there?
I think it was really only if there were questions for the EPC.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Looks like Commissioner Hagan has.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I brought this to the board a couple of months ago, based on a disturbing article that I read regarding the EPA overturning a decades-old regulation regarding the use of phosphogypsum in roadways. As our report states, there's an ongoing debate regarding the recent EPA approval and the potential impact to the environment and public health and safety, the outcome of which remains uncertain. This is a very scientific issue, and our report is a clear reflection of that. However, for me, the primary mission of government is to protect the well-felt health and safety of our citizens. And what I found, that's why I found this issue was very troubling, and I'm going to be brief here, but in '92, the EPA evaluated reuse of PG in roadway construction. It banned the practice because the lifetime cancer fatality risk was greater than 3 in 10,000 for people living in homes built on reclaimed roads. As Mr. Lyons said, the Fertilizer Institute in 2019 submitted a petition to overturn the EPA regulation restricting the reuse of phosphogypsum. In October of 2020, the EPA reversed its regulation and the approval letter in our backup. As a result of that, two petitions were filed by environmental groups with the EPA. One requesting the EPA to reconsider its October 2020 decision, and then a second petition was filed by different environmental groups, not only requesting the EPA reconsider its October 20 decision, but they also requesting that they implement stronger regulations. I'm not going to get into the scientific weeds, because candidly, it's above my pay grade, but it's all about discrepancies in how you calculate the cancer fatality risk criteria of using PG due to the radiation emitted from this material. The EPA uses a three in 10,000, a lifetime acceptable cancer fatality risk criteria for PG in roadways. However, the National Academy of Science, the FDA, the National Research Council, and even the EPA itself routinely recommends and utilizes a more protective risk criteria of 1 in 10,000 for known cancer-causing carcinogens. Now, the EPA's consultant recommended that the Fertilizer Institute revise their risk numbers for reclamer homes and to evaluate other criteria. The report was done, yet for some reason, the EPA still approved the reuse. As was reported in the initial article, it doesn't make economic sense to transplant this material more than 200 miles, so given the proximity of PG stacks and the manufacturer of fertilizer in Hillsborough, we would essentially be the lab rat for PG in road projects. Now, as we heard this morning, Mosaic supports the use of PG in road projects and are asking for additional background in science. I'm the first one to acknowledge that we're excellent community partners and have done a good job in managing the PG stacks. That being said, I cannot think of any reason why, at this time, we should consider using this product. Given what's been presented here and in our backup, I have serious concerns about the reuse of PG in roadways, namely, the risks poised to residents and wildlife for roadway runoff. And I want to point out that it's not like the cost of our road construction would be less expensive if this product was used. Apparently, the cost would likely increase due to the additional rules and regulations that would be applied for using this material. So, I want to point that out. I do have a couple of quick questions for EPC staff, if someone is here.
And do we have EPC staff online?
Commissioner, we're here. I'll let Sterling Woodard and the head of the Air Division, Rick Marotti, is here, as well as Reggie Sanford, ask for any questions that you have, Commissioner Hagan or other commissioners.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions, shouldn't take long. Could you base your report on?
Sterling looks frozen. Reggie?
Yeah, I think Sterling is probably frozen now, but Commissioner, to answer your question, our report was simply based on a comparison of the 1992 study that was initially done by EPA, also TFI, which is, I guess, the trade industry for the phosphate organizations, they did a study, and then EPA's contractor. So, our study was based on, I mean, our report was based on the studies that were already provided, nothing else.
Okay, and then, are you able to give any additional information or expand on the EPA's reasoning behind its '92 decision to restrict the use of PG in roadway construction?
Well, yes, this is Sterling Woodard, EPC staff. Can you hear me?
We can.
One of the biggest issues in what we did is we looked at the EPA's evaluation of this, not just in '92, but the recent evaluation, because they're consultants. And the biggest thing was that when they didn't approve it back in 1992, it had to do with the fact that this roadway could be abandoned in the future and possibly reclaimed, okay, at some future date. Well, if they reclaimed it and there was phosphogypsum used in that road base, it could present a significant risk to the, to the person who lived on that home. So, that was the original reason why the EPA did not approve it back in 1992. So, when the Phosphate Institute submitted this request, that was really our focus, because both Reggie and I have been around since '92, I've been here since like 1991. So, we were aware of EPA not authorizing use in roadbase. So, when this approval came out, and we were asked by the county administrator to look at it, that's what we did, focused mainly on that, but what we did is, once we reviewed their consultant's evaluation of the approval, of the request, there were some issues that came up, namely, the crayfish issue, and also the fact that you could use a different type of risk scenario in order to do an approval for a state program.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. One additional, whether it's a question or just to reaffirm, but I mentioned earlier that the EPA's consultant had recommended that the Fertilizer Institute revise their numbers for reclamer homes and ask them to evaluate additional risks, and neither were done, but the EPA still approved the reuse. Am I accurate in that, saying that?
Reggie or Sterling? I believe so, but again, they pulled all the reports apart.
Yes, Commissioner, I guess Sterling is probably having some technical issues, but yes, you would be correct in saying that. I don't even think they relooked at the crayfish portion of the report. The idea is that some of the runoff, you know, from the, from the roadbase actually affects, you know, these, you know, edible crustaceans, and so the, I guess, the radiation levels that they would normally have would be increased because of that. And so, EPA asked them to go, TFI, which is, you know, the Phosphate Institute, to go back and look at that, and they declined to even go back and look at it. I guess another significant thing that probably Sterling would have mentioned if he were on the call is that the risk of that the call is that the risk of that EPA typically uses to evaluate toxicants, you know, highly-toxic material, they usually look at a cancer risk that would be on a scale within a range of 1 in 100,000 all the way to 1 in a million. And one of the things that EPA did in this small, you know, this current and, you know, more recent analysis is look at a risk that was along the lines of 3 in 10,000. I don't know if Sterling's back on the call or not. So they lowered or reduced the, you know, the risk ratio for increased cancer cases. So those are pretty significant. I mean, everyone should understand it is within EPA's purview to make that determination of what that increased cancer risk should be, but I think it also should be, you know, notice that it is a more relaxed ratio that they're looking at.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate, you know, your input. One more question, this is for Christine. Is the appropriate mechanism to restrict PJ road projects, would that be in the form of a policy?
That would certainly be an appropriate option for the Board. There's, you know, a variety of options. The administration could do an administrative directive, it could be in our procurement documents or a board policy, and since it's being initiated by a commissioner, maybe the board policy is the most appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, if in the future, if it becomes clear that PJ reuse is safe roadway construction, then certainly a future Board can revisit the issue, but until then, I would much rather take a safe and cautious approach when it comes to protecting our citizens. So I'm going to make a motion just to direct staff to bring back for Board consideration a draft board policy that restricts the use of phosphogypsum in county roadway.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Myers. And do we have, see, Commissioner Overman, your hand is raised.
Yes, Chair, thank you very much. And I thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for bringing this up. And I was actually, my question relates to what you just asked Ms. Beck regarding, you know, the legal standing on this particular issue. You know, obviously, EPA is developing some level of opinion on this particular issue and siloing the various different reports to come up with a recommendation and/or an issue. My question probably is in relation to either Ms. Beck or Mr. Marotti. You know, we have, we have an EPC to address our local environmental impacts that might be, say, for example, because of our shores, our rivers, sandy soils, all kinds of circumstances that might in fact represent a higher level of risk of this product than maybe other areas where the soils aren't in the same way or the environment is not the same. So if the Board makes at the BOCC level a policy decision, you know, it becomes then a capic decision. But if we weren't, and the EPC had the jurisdiction to establish a policy in relation to an environmental risk, could it be maintained then in the event that we were overruled or over, or it didn't pass? Or, I mean, I'm trying to understand who has the greatest amount of ability to protect this particular issue, whether it be the BOCC or the EPC, to be able to justify the position?
Commissioner, was that question directed to me?
I, yes.
Or Mr. Marotti?
Either answer from her, because she works so closely together, it's fine by me.
Rick Marotti with the EPC, I can address one aspect of that. There is a preemption law that's been in place for maybe about 10 years that prohibits environmental regulations at the local level from impacting state road projects. So the EPC would be hampered to some extent on having any of its own rule path that would limit how state roads systems are built. So the BOCC policy is a really good first step in addressing it, because it would be, you know, how we regulate some of your contracts for the roads, while the EPC has some limitations from legislative preemptions. But we can look at other options, too, if the policy is supplemented.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you. That actually is why I asked the question, because I think it's critically important that if the Board's position for Hillsborough County residents, that we adopt something in place that would suggest is a risk that is not appropriate for our county, then we want to make sure that we have the appropriate protections to do so. And it sounds as though Ms. Beck, you confirm this, that given what Mr. Marotti said regarding state roads, that the county's ordinance or this particular action would have greater level of protection. Is that your opinion as well?
I simply understood that if a policy is directed, that then staff would be required to follow the board policy in all the work in contracting and road building in Hillsborough County. So it's not an ordinance, it's a policy, but staff would still be obliged to follow it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions with regards to this? Commissioner Hagan, you have your hand up, is that from before?
No, this will be brief. I just want to say it's an excellent point by Commissioner Overman, and I'm certainly supportive of any additional EPC action that needs to be taken. I just want to point out why I specifically mentioned the county policy is that we have Board Policy 09.01, .00, .01. That's a road maintenance and construction policy. And so that's why I started here, but certainly, whether it's now or in the future, if we need to pursue any potential EPC action, I'm certainly liable of doing that as well. But I thought this was the best place to start.
And this will be, I don't know if anyone, but it sounds like there's, there is a standing environmental organizational complaint or something filed administratively at the EPA to reconsider this decision at this time under the new administration. I guess that's an EPC, I think that's what I heard someone say.
Correct. Actually, Commissioner Hagan is the one that explained it and explained it well.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a lawsuit by various environmental organizations challenging the decision to allow use in the road base, and then there's an addition for rulemaking, a separate action, a petition to initiate rulemaking to address that issue, but expand overall regulation of phosphogypsum in the stacks themselves, the two-pronged approach.
Okay. Just wanted to.
Commissioner? I think John Lyons wants to say something, and I'd like to add one quick thing as well.
Okay. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. I think the, hopefully, thank you very much. My opinion is that this would increase construction costs based on the current rules. There's a lot of restrictions in what they've included in the EPA approval. There's things such as you're going to have to get the project approved by the EPA. The limits of material use has to be mapped. Any excess material has to be hauled back to the gypsum stack. And there was a good point about if we're going to do road reclamation in the future, which is pretty typical of us doing full-neft reclamation or milling and resurfacing, there's a chance that it could expose that material to act in the air again. And so personally, in my professional opinion, I don't think we would recommend using the material under those conditions at this time as well.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Commissioner, I just wanted to state for the record that obviously DEP, the state handles the mining and permitting of phosphogypsum. But obviously, the, speaking from Mosaic and Mosaic, we all had a presentation that it is used beneficially in other parts of the country. We'll keep the Board apprised as this makes its way through the FDEP and their criteria, which it hasn't done yet, and I'm sure Mr. Lyons will keep you apprised of any information that would come through FDOT as this comes forward. And finally, this was done at the very end of the EPA Administrator Andrew Wheeler's term. There will be a new administrator coming in, and obviously, there's a possibility that this may be reversed or taken into a different route. So just wanted to let the Board know, we'll keep them apprised as things move forward.
Thank you, thank you. And seeing that, and I think I do not see any further comments, I know Commissioner, okay, it looks like every discussion is finished. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and if we could have a roll call.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Kemp, your item, Item F3, to direct the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the mobility fee ordinance as well as for the parks program ordinance.
Thank you. And I wanted to make the Board aware of this. When the Board approved mobility fees and park impact fees last year, these were supported by impact fee studies that calculated rates based on the capital costs of providing roads and parks. The Board elected at that time to phase in the fees over time rather than enacting them immediately at the full amount. The Board created a schedule to phase in these increases at that time. In the case of the mobility fee, this fee goes to fund road construction, which we have heard so much about not having the funds for, needs, road construction needs created by development, an important, extremely important fee for us in light of our great needs in this area of transportation funding in unincorporated Hillsborough County. The mobility fee is currently at 80% of the recommended amount. That rate is scheduled to increase to 90% in January 2022, and finally, reach 100% in October 2022. In the case of the park impact fee, until we took action last year, rates had remained the same, at the same level, since the 1980s, more than 35 years with no updates. Because so much inflation of costs had occurred over three decades, the park impact fee study recommended significant increases. The Board tried to make that go down a little easier with a phase in. The park's impact fee is presently being assessed at 55% of the recommended assessment rate for calendar year 2021, and is scheduled to increase 65% in January 2022. But now, like so often, we have a problem brewing in Tallahassee. There are identical bills pending in the Florida House and Senate to limit impact fee increases to 3% a year. This legislation would prevent us from ever being able to achieve the increases that we planned and would put us permanently behind, permanently, for decades to come. We've already been behind for decades in the past, this is decades in the future. We would be specifically and permanently harmed and punished in Hillsborough County. I don't believe that this is a risk we should take. Another factor is that by law, impact fee increases do not take effect for 90 days after two public hearings. This means that in order to protect ourselves, we have to act now in order to have enough time to bring these fees up to a reasonable level. I'll tell you, too, the bills being presented in Tallahassee, not surprisingly, one is by a Pinellas County legislator. In Pinellas County, they have no problems with their impact fees because their growth is de minimis. The, they just, it's not even an issue there. And as well, in Sarasota County is the paired Tallahassee bill, and in Sarasota County, they've been responsible, and they've kept up their impact fees over the years. They have nothing like what we have. Hillsborough County has been an outlier for decades, a high-growth county with really shamefully, recklessly low impact fees that have really undermined our ability to move forward. It's one of the reasons we're suffering now with the sales tax not being approved at this time. We have a lot of pain with that, and that would be making up for decades of infrastructure that we haven't had, because we haven't been charging impact fees for decades or anywhere near what was an appropriate level. We're finally starting to get them up, but if we were to be limited to a 3% increase a year, we would be, it would be very devastating for us for the future. So at this time, I'm going to pass a gavel to the vice chair. I have two separate motions to make, one for each fee. One would be to direct the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the mobility fee program ordinance, amending the phase-in schedule to begin assessing mobility fees at their full 100% assessment rate effective no later than June 30, 2021.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, we have a second, by Commissioner Smith. I see several hands raised. I did have my hand raised, but I'll recognize Commissioner White first, and then Commissioner Smith, and then Commissioner Myers.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, I fully understand why you've brought this back, and I can appreciate, you know, why you've brought it back, given, you know, the information that we now have in terms of this new bill being filed. However, we've seen what happens when we poke the bear, known as the Florida Legislature, and, you know, we oftentimes end up with a lot of preemption and things like that. This is a bill that was just filed. It has not even been heard by committee yet, as I understand it, and I'm afraid that if we take action today based upon that, that it could actually have the opposite effect and serve as a rallying cry for the supporters of that bill to work even harder to usher it through. So my position's going to remain unchanged for that reason. You know, we've made a deal, we've moved forward with the phase-in in good faith. I don't want to change midstream and, you know, certainly want to just make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position to where we're poking the proverbial bear and perhaps having that backfire on us in some way.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's quite right. Actually, I believe Commissioner Smith had her hand up first, and then I'll let.
Okay, sorry, I'll.
Sorry, it's hard to figure it out. Go ahead.
Infrastructure costs money, and somebody has to pay for it. Whatever the developer doesn't pay, the taxpayers have to pay, or else nobody pays, and our community goes without the needed road improvements and transportation infrastructure. Impact fees only pay for the capital costs, so the taxpayers already have to pay for the operations and maintenance. I have always been a strong proponent of requiring development to pay its way by setting impact fees at 100% of the actual cost. We have a study determining what that 100% is, and it has a lot of loopholes and credits in it so that it already gives a lot to the developers. We haven't been able to get to 100% yet, but since the last time we considered this, a few important things have changed. So I am hoping we can get there today, not just the legislation, but now that the Supreme Court has struck down the transportation surtax, we now know we cannot count on that funding source to address our transportation problems. We have recently had a hard look at our transportation budget in a recent workshop, where we could all see that we do not have money in our budget to pay for even those high-priority road improvements on our five-year plan, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of our transportation needs. And now we have the threat of state preemption breathing down our necks. I know some commissioners wanted to stick with the schedule of reconsidering this in May, but I hope these new points of information will be considered with an open mind and bring this Board to consensus on charging the 100%. this board to consensus on charging the 100% impact fee that our study has shown is the developer's fair share of our sorely needed transportation costs. If we don't pass this and the Supreme Court does their, pass their bill, we won't be able to bring our fees up to 100% of the actual costs in the foreseeable future. And we won't be able to charge developers their fair share. And that'll all be on the backs of our taxpayers and cause our communities to continue suffering as development digs us further and further into the hole on infrastructure without paying its share, which is what got us to this place in the first place. So knowing what we know now, I hope that we can come to consensus today to move forward on Commissioner Kemp's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. To Commissioner White, thank you for your comments because that was the question I wanted to raise about the bill and where it is up in Tallahassee at this time. But Commissioner Kemp, is it possible we could wait till May to really kind of see a more status of the progress of this bill by the legislators? Just asking a question.
If I could. Commissioner Overman?
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
No, it's not possible. And the reason it's not possible is, and what I think wasn't quite understood about board process before, was that it takes two public hearings to enact these. So, and we have to notice in between. And then 90 days from, and maybe I stated this wrong, but we can have that by Ms. Beck, but 90 days from the enactment, when we do it until it takes effect. And what we are trying to do is the, if there's a July 1 deadline that puts that in effect, we want to fully meet, be able to do this before that deadline. And actually, I should have just referred you to Ms. Beck in the first place. Ms. Beck, would you?
All I wanted to say is, and perhaps Cameron Clark is on the line, but my understanding is one public hearing, not two.
I'm sorry.
So Cameron, can you confirm that?
Yes, this is Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. That's correct. Commissioner Kemp, I think some of the confusion is just these are two separate ordinances, the mobility fee ordinance and the impact fee ordinance are two separate ordinances. They're standalone ordinances. But it only takes one public hearing to amend each. When the board did this in May 20 of last year, there were two separate public hearings for each ordinance, but they were back-to-back at the same meeting. So each ordinance only requires one public hearing.
And I guess, thank you for the clarifications and correction. But the point remains taken that if we, according to a deadline, and it would be a very tight deadline at this point, in order to get this enacted by June 30. And typically, when Tallahassee passes a bill, it goes into effect on July 1.
Right.
So we don't have any choices of that. And as long as I'm speaking now, I'd just like to say too, that we, with the, you know, when we first did this, there was some concern about COVID and what effect COVID would have. And that was part of the, what was considered at the time. And what we've seen is, at least as far as home building has gone in Hillsborough County, it has not only not slowed down one bit, it has sped up. We have a tremendous amount of growth that we're missing, the opportunity to get this infrastructure paid for. It has not done one bit of, the fees that we're charging and the building industry has not slowed down for a second. And so we have done record amounts of subsidies on the back of our taxpayers at this moment and record impacts in our roads and other needs that are not getting paid for. So we're just doing without, or else it's on the back of taxpayers. And the counties that get impacted, what I was saying about Pinellas and Sarasota, is the worst damaged counties in the state of Florida. And Hillsborough is number one, are the high-growth counties that charge shamefully low fees. They are the number one damaged by something like this. And this was directed at Hillsborough County, to make no mistake about it. And if we don't do something at this point, we're going to be forever put into this situation.
Well, I'd just like to share with us, I think this would be like the third or the fourth time this same bill has been filed in Tallahassee. So I'd just like to bring that to our attention as well. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to offer some comments and then, unless there's any follow-up after that, I'd like to bring this to a close. I want to thank Commissioner Kemp for bringing this up. I have been concerned since I first heard of the Senate and the House bills to clearly change the playing field. And to pick an arbitrary, you know, increase does not make financial sense to me. When we put this ordinance program into place, we clearly indicated what 100% assessment rate would be. We know what the 100% assessment rate is. It's stated as such. What we chose to do, however, was to offer a discount to phase-in to allow the industry to adjust to the fact that the fees were going to go to the real cost based on our consultants' calculations, financially sustainable processes, financially responsible processes to determine the fees associated with building the infrastructure that's necessary to address increased residential and commercial development and to build the infrastructure, to create the mobility for those communities where the increases happened. So I think it's critically important that we recognize that we've established 100% rate. What we chose to do is offer a discount. And given the fact that we are faced with potentially being unable to financially be responsible by being capped at what we offered as a discount to a 3%, you know, movement in that discount, does put Hillsborough County citizens at the risk of not having us be able to serve them fairly and not have developers be able to address their needs as well as to build the housing and the buildings that we need, knowing that the infrastructure will be there as they develop in our communities. And I think that's what's so important here. It is our, and we heard it from Commissioner Hagan earlier, it is our responsibility as government to serve our citizens in the area of their needs and safety. And transportation is in dire need of improvement of our safety needs. It is understandable that we're concerned about private enterprise and how they succeed. And we obviously want to see them do so. But I think it's also critically important that, you know, for 15 years, the true bearer of the discounted fees that we did not increase until we addressed this ordinance was been borne by the homeowners and the residents of Hillsborough County. And it's time for us to have a financial relationship with our growth plans that makes sense, makes financial sense, and is financially responsible. We have been transparent on our studies that determine what the true cost, true unit cost of the future impact of our infrastructure. And I think it's important that if we find ourselves at risk of not being responsible in our finances by not acting to protect our citizens and our community from an arbitrary increase due to politics more than anything else, I think we will find ourselves in a world of hurt of never being able to meet the business owners, the development community, and the citizens of Hillsborough County. So with that, I see that there are hands raised by Stacy White, Commissioner White and Commissioner Myers. I believe, Commissioner White, you raised your hand prior to Commissioner Myers.
Actually, once again, I am asking to get into the queue a second time. I'm really breaking my rule today. Do I have the floor, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, yes, sir. You're recognized.
Okay. You know, I've been processing all of this as this discussion's been taking place and I, you know, I'm not going to be able to support the motions that are going to be put on the floor. But I do have some thoughts that I'd like to share when we get to the future issues section of the agenda. But just to get a couple of questions answered on the front end, to be sure that the comments I'm going to make during future issues are in order, and they are related to this topic. Ms. Beck, I'd first like to ask you, or just confirm with you, I guess I should say, that we are not allowed by law to index impact fees to inflation, to an inflationary factor. Is that correct?
Let me ask Cameron Clark to address that. I know we do index the impact fees. I'm not positive about the inflation. Cameron, can you address that?
Yes, that's correct. Commissioner White, the, I'm sorry, Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. There is a mechanism in the ordinance now, each of the impact fee types that we have, both, so you're talking about mobility, and then you're talking about parks, fire, rescue at schools, has a mechanism that, first of all, the study has to be updated every three years. That's something that we just started doing in the last few years. And then in years when the study is not being updated, there's a mechanism that allows for certain cost indexes to be, well, to be indexed, to be increased to address increasing costs, which is one of the components of an impact fee study. The factors that it's tied to are not inflation. They're factors that were identified by the consultants in each of the studies that have to do with, for instance, cost of school construction or cost of, you know, fire station construction, things like that. And their indexes, I want to say it's called the, I forget, the Engineering News Record, for instance, is one of them. It's a database that tracks costs of certain facilities and how much they change from year to year. So there is a mechanism in there that allows for cost indexing, at least in years when there's not a study update, in answer to your question.
But they, so if I'm hearing you right, they cannot be indexed in perpetuity. We're required to do a new study.
Yeah.
For some, every some period of time, right?
The statute's not explicit on that, other than it says impact fees have to be, have to be based on the most recent localized data. So ideally, unlike, for instance, what happened with something like parks, where the study wasn't updated for, you know, 30-plus years, jurisdictions are updating the studies so that the data, the data that the fee is based on is current.
Okay. Thank you. I think that means that some of the comments I want to make later are in order. And I'd like to ask either Commissioner Kemp or staff. Commissioner Kemp, you had mentioned the prospect of some new additional impact fees for different things, such as libraries at the, I believe it was the last meeting. Where is staff on that and developing something to bring back to the board?
We are still considering that. We have a lot of work to do to bring something forward.
Yes, yes. Okay, okay. Well, in hearing Mr. Clark's comments and Mrs. Wise's comments, I do think that means that some of the comments I'd like to make later are in order. And I appreciate you giving me the floor to ask those questions.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And to the motion, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized. Or your hand is raised to the?
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, no.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Overman?
Yes.
Just one more point.
Ms. Smith, Commissioner Kemp, would you like to round it up? And we'll take a motion?
Yeah, this is short point. Just, this isn't the final vote. This only gives us the opportunity to consider this at the time. So to be clear, this gives us the opportunity to come back and look at this. And at that time, if you're not in agreement, you can amend it or, you know, not support it. But please give the opportunity to at least move this forward for consideration. Thank you.
So does your motion?
I appreciate the clarification, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. So your motion is to establish the process, including establishing a public hearing to discuss this particular ordinance and its phasing prior to being able to address prior to July 1, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
It was direct to county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the mobility fee program ordinance, amending the phase-in schedule to begin assessing mobility fees at their full 100% assessment rate effective no later than June 30, 2021. But we have to have a meeting to do that, and we have to have a discussion and a vote around that. This only gives us the opportunity to consider that.
Excellent. And the second came from Commissioner Smith, I believe? Is that correct? My apologies.
Yes, second from Commissioner Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. When do we anticipate this item coming back to the board?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Ms. Wise and Ms. Beck, would you address the potential dates available for this item?
So, board members, because of the timeline here, it would, if you back up 90 days because of the motion requiring this to be done by June 30, if you back up 90 days, that puts us roughly needing to have this in place by the beginning of March or the end of March. So honestly, we would have to probably bring the ordinance to your land use agenda, and then you would have to find another meeting to hold the public hearing. That would, there is no other meeting in March.
And the good news is that we may be able to have a full board at that point if Commissioner Cohen is able to join us virtually at that time. Commissioner Myers, does that answer your question that we'll?
Yes, thank you.
Prior to March 31. Okay. With that, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Hagan?
Mr. Hagan, you're muted. He's still muted.
Overman?
Yes.
Hagan?
Commissioner, you're muted.
There he is.
Your mic is unmuted now.
Commissioner Hagan?
It seems as if Commissioner Hagan is not there.
He is stepped away. Okay. Could you do the tally at this point?
With Hagan away, the motion carried four to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized for your follow-up.
Thank you. I have a second motion, as I said. Also, direct the county attorney's office to draft an amendment to the consolidated impact fee assessment program ordinance, amending the phase-in schedule to begin assessing park impact fees at their full 100% assessment rate effective no later than June 30, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Commissioner Myers, your hand is raised. Okay. I'm.
No, Madam Chairman.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. With that, seeing no discussion, will you please give a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Hagan? Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried four to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Overman, and thank you for your support for the motion to the board. And Ms. Wise, we'll move it.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Overman's item, item F2, regarding the Safe and Sound Hillsborough County Violence Prevention Collaborative, and working with staff on that. I think that is for Commissioner Overman.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized. I'm sorry.
Okay. Good afternoon. Today, we're working with, taking a look at the Safe and Sound Hillsborough program and some efforts that are going on in our county. In the, in the issue, we found that the Evening Reporting Center is a wonderful opportunity to improve our juvenile justice system here in Hillsborough County. And I'm asking you to support, for your support of this item. Safe and Sound, as we heard a little bit earlier, Hillsborough has been awarded a contract. contract with DJJ to operate the Evening Reporting Center in our county. The significant goals will be to reduce gun violence among juveniles in Hillsborough County, minimize failures to appear for court hearings, and the technical violations resulting in secure detention. As you have seen, there is a letter in the backup urging us to support this program in, and signed by several members of our delegation, of our legislative delegation. While its location is centrally located in zip code 33610, it will serve all of Hillsborough County residents, and with a target of serving up to 200 individuals in the first year. I think it is great to see the additional services available to the youth of our county. The first year is critical to their long-term success, and I'm bringing this item forward so staff can engage with Safe and Sound to evaluate what level of support is needed in the short term and the long term. The Evening Reporting Center program will offer a variety of services outlined in the backup materials, and the cost of recidivism in our society is great. It is really detrimental when we aren't able to help people move towards success. While the benefits of keeping qualified children out of secured detention are priceless, we know that financial repercussions of secured detention are very steep. This effort intends to not only reduce the cost to individuals' lives with the benefit of also reducing the county's expenses associated with the juvenile detention center. As Benjamin Franklin said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." The early, the Evening Reporting Center process does just that, and I hope you can support the item. Supporting these kids with essential wraparound services and keeping them in the community is better than locking them up. So my motion is to move to direct staff to work with Safe and Sound Hillsborough Community Violence Prevention Collaborative, and any pertinent stakeholders to find funding to support and expand the Evening Reporting Center in Hillsborough County.
Second a motion.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, and a second by Commissioner Myers. And is there any discussion at this time? Commissioner Myers, your hand is up, maybe from before?
No, it's up now. This is a very worthwhile program with Safe and Sound, the Evening Report, many of our youth, this would give them the opportunity to not have a record in their personal life to go through this program. You know, I have worked with Mr. Barton over the years, and I strongly support this, and hopefully that we can find the necessary funds for this particular program and to save our youth at the same time. So thank you.
Thank you. And I see no other comments at this time, and seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Can we have a roll call?
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
We are now on to future discussion items.
And we, we beat 1:30. So, and I know that, Commissioner White, you said you had some items?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm looking at the entire page worth of notes that I've written down here, and I think it's, um...
We only have till...
I think, I think, I think what I have here is just too much to ask of staff without a vote of the board, so I think I'm just going to schedule a commissioner item on, with these thoughts, at a future meeting. And while I have the floor, you know, I was, I, I had planned my day, you know, to be here, you know, a full business day, you know, till 5 o'clock or so today, and I just want to compliment you, Madam Chair, and you, Ms. Wise, and Ms. Beck, for a very, very well-run and very efficient meeting today.
Well, thank you very much. I always say that it makes it easy. The chair was surprised when I first got here because I said, "All I have to do is say the magic words, Ms. Wise." So with that, so you don't have any, any future items at this point? Thank you.
No, I'm going to schedule, I'm going to schedule this for a future meeting.
Sounds good. I just didn't know if you had any, okay, at all. Okay. And Commissioner Smith?
Yes, and I've been talking to staff in a couple of briefings and meetings to, and their amenable, so I just want to put on the record that I'm asking staff to work with me to bring back a process, and that will be a commissioner item or something at some point, to, for determining the state statutorily mandated concurrency for water and wastewater systems as we review con-plan amendments and zoning changes. I've talked about this at our water workshop, and as I said, I've been working, talking to, of course, water utility staff and planning commission staff and the county attorneys signaling that this needed to be brought back some kind of process, and I think, so I just want to advise the board that that will be coming back.
Thank you. And let's see, I see no other?
Yeah, one other hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It's not a future item.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's not a future item. But I would like to go back and give thanks to the Affordable Housing Director, Cheryl Howell, Jody Jenkins, and Tremaine Whitney, I think is his last name. We had some hiccups with the Tampa Park Apartments and some of the residents still not being able to find a place, and all, and all this transpired in the last three weeks, and our staff worked very diligently to get them the necessary funding they need for housing and all, so I would just like to give them a publicly thank you for what they have done to help our citizens.
Thank you, thank you. Very well taken, and I know we have staff that are just working so hard on so many avenues, so it's, it's good to have that raised and recognized, and thank you for doing that. And I think that there are no one else at this time with comments, and so we'll look forward to when Commissioner Cohen, again wishing him well, looking forward to when he can join us once again. And with that, we'll adjourn.
Have a great day, everybody.